I'd like to call, a meeting to order.
Thank you.
Yes, no doubt.
Good, I'm glad, people should be grateful.
I think we're good. First order of business is an invocation, if everyone would please stand, by Pastor Jeff Henderson of Harbor Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, when your people were in a foreign, in a strange city so many years ago, the temptation was to just withdraw, but you told them to bless the city, to live and to love and to seek the good and the beauty and the truth of the city. And so, Father, now it is in that heart that we pray now, for the good of this city, for the good of this county, Lord, that you would put your blessing upon this place. Reminded of what a potential presidential candidate sought to run under, and he was seeking the call for civic grace, Father, and so I pray for that now, that there would be a grace that is shown in the civic manner, Father, a grace that is shown as people request things, as people dialogue, as people discuss, as people disagree, Father, that grace would be shown to one another, even on different sides of the equation. I pray for that grace to lead towards a unity, Father, that people will be working together for a unified county, Lord, that is seeking the good, the true, and what is beautiful for this county, Lord. I pray also that we would lead and make decisions that are based not just for the benefit of ourselves, but, Lord, thinking first on behalf of what benefits the other, Father, even if that's on the other side of the equation, or the aisle, or wherever it is on an issue. And, Father, let this county lead the way, and the way we interact with one another, and the way we disagree, and the way we discuss, and the way we react when things don't go our way. Lord, let us lead the way in seeking the good, the truth, and the beauty of this county that you've so graciously given us the privilege of living in, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of housekeeping items here. Mr. Administrator, any changes to the agenda?
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have several suggested changes. First, to the consent agenda. Item number 21, under Property Management, sublease agreement for professional office space with Valdez Hanger LLC, for Metropolitan Planning Organization, by Manatee County as lessee, for property located at 8115th Street East, Sarasota, Florida. We request that item be deferred. Then, changes to reports, under Parks and Natural Resources, item number 39. Beach Renourishment update, the presentation attached to this item was updated and replaced. Those are the suggested changes, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you very much. Other two items that we have, at 10 o'clock is a time certain for the beach renourishment update, and at 9:45, we have item 37, which is the ordinance number 19-14, amending requirements for county administrator. Are there any commissioners at this point that have items to be pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, good, moving right along. We'll now head into the awards. First one is the Employee of the Month.
Yay!
Beautiful day in Manatee County. Charlie Bishop, Director of Property Management. We're here to recognize Teresa Wonderlick, Employee of the Month for February, along with her is her husband, John Wonderlick, works in our IT department, and the many supporters behind me in property management and public safety. We were fortunate to have Teresa join Manatee County in August of 2011, starting out at Animal Services. For numerous years, she worked there, and then, I believe, in August of 2014, we were blessed in property management by allowing or having her come to property management and working as a night custodian from 3:00 to midnight, even though us on the day shift didn't regularly see Teresa. We knew every day when we came the next day and how beautiful the buildings looked, and we knew she was there, and we appreciated that. During that time, working from 3:00 to midnight, she elected to go to Leadership Academy 1 during the day, and she successfully completed that, and now she's on a waiting list for Phase 2. So, we had a change in life, and we decided to come back down to the days, and so, late last year, she came down to the day shift under the supervision of Paula Pezmark, and she was assigned to the Public Safety Complex, a very dynamic, very unique building, to say the least. There, she was recognized by many of her peers, including Joel Richman, who elected to put in some very kind words to nominate her for Employee of the Month. So, with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Joel, say a few words.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Joel Richman, Manatee County Emergency Management. Like Charlie said, I was fortunate enough to work with Teresa back when she got hired at Animal Services, and, you know, she was a great employee then. I wish we could have recognized her then, because her hard work and dedication was very evident. Fast forward to the present day, she gets transferred over to the Public Safety Center, and I see her again, and I'm reminded, you know, what a great, hard-working employee she is. You know, she has this infectious smile, she brings joy to the workplace, she's always busy as a bee, a real hard worker, so I'm glad that she won this award. We're privileged to work with her every day, and you should be honored to have her as your Employee of the Month. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, I'm overwhelmed right now. Thank you, everybody. I would like to say thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for taking time this morning to recognize me. I'd also like to thank the employee recognition team for choosing me. It's an honor to be nominated among so many hard-working employees, and I'm sure the decision was a very difficult one. There's just so many people to recognize. I'd like to recognize Bob Van Etten, the building supervisor and his crew, because without them, this would not be possible. And also, Paula Pezmark, for the opportunity to work at that beautiful building, the Public Safety Center. Let's see, who else? I take pride in my work, and it makes me feel great when people notice. The employees at the Public Safety Center, they noticed, and it's been a pleasure working there, and they all make me feel appreciated and valued, and I consider myself very fortunate to be part of such a great team. Thank you, everybody.
Teresa, again, it's with great honor that you're recognized on February 12th, 2019, as Employee of the Month.
Yay!
Yeah, she does.
Okay. Commissioner Whitmore has a comment before we all exit.
Teresa, Teresa, you and I have known each other since 2011, and she worked at Animal Services, and you all, some of you all have been around, and you know the very rough time we had, and this poor girl, and the staff there, and Joel, I mean, they went through heck with very, a very bad situation, and they kept trudging along. I went and volunteered a few times at Animal Services, and I would see Teresa carrying 50-pound bags of dog food around and working her rear end off. I see Sarah here, I mean, and then I got to know her again when she went to 3:00 to 11:00 shift, and I'd seen her at nights, and I'd go by, and you are, you're, I consider you my friend. I mean, I didn't even know you had gone to days, because I haven't seen you lately, but I just want you to know, Teresa, that we love what you've done in this county, and you may not seem like it's being appreciated, but I've noticed it, and I'm sure many others have throughout the years, and Joel noticed it, and he was your boss at Animal Services. So, you deserve it, hon, and I'm sure it wasn't a hard decision. You deserved it. So, I want to tell you, we love you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Teresa, congratulations.
Okay, um, next up in the award for the 2018 Highway Best Bridge Project, Fort Hammer
Bridge. I'm not sure who's presenting that, maybe Charlie, or?
No, Chad.
She or Chad.
Chad, okay. It was a good cooperative effort.
What did he say?
You're up, man. I think it's-
Let me stall for a moment.
You did good.
Good morning, Chad Budso, Public Works. This is the project, to end all projects as far as how many people and staff, even if you, one of the things, SE may even go through, is how many project managers we went through on this. The biggest plug, I was going to wait till the end as far as a plug, but just give me a moment right here to say, thank you, board, and it matters of which board, because it took some time to have the diligence to allocate the funding, go through and just make the decision to say, this is something we're going to do, because it took multiple boards to get that done. And we thank you, and I believe the community thanks you, because there isn't many days when somebody says, when are the other two lanes coming?
Yeah, oh, God, every day.
We hear it all the time, Chad.
Do you remember what they, oh, my gosh, when they didn't want it?
Good morning. Seiya Mullane is our County Engineer and Deputy Director, Public Works. This is our, there are two publications nationwide, Road and Bridge and Engineering News Report. We already bagged Road and Bridge Award previously. This is our second award for best bridge design nationwide. With us, we have the Consulting Engineer, AECOM, and our Bridge Engineer that were involved from the inception. We also have our contractor, Johnson Brothers, in the room. For those who are nowadays suggest which fool came up with this two-lane bridge?
I know.
We did, but that was in '07, '08, when we were proposing four-lane bridge, and we couldn't pass the muster for the four-lane. We ended up with a two-lane. As part of that two-lane, we did the approaches in-house, Upper Manatee and Fort Hammer Road, and we pushed that through. Basically, it took us from, I would say, '08, all the way to sometime 2014, literally in permitting. Started with the Coast Guard, and we dealt with Miami, we made a final trip to Miami office, they signed off on the permit, and Coast Guard is part of Homeland Security. The permit went to Homeland Security in Washington. Homeland Security, if you all remember, there was some retired Admiral here and there that wasn't so pleased, and before you know it, Homeland Security assigned the whole document to a private consultant to re-review what Miami did, and that resulted into a 400 questionnaires. We, immediately after that, we started a weekly conference call, literally weekly conference call, attacking the 400 item. And we finally managed, sometime in 2014, acquiring the permit. Then, the debate was, what do we do? Do we build a bridge and separate from the two roadways? The decision we made was, we're going to combine all three. So, the project, 35 million and change, was consist of two roadways, both of them were done in-house. I'll brag about that a little bit later in Florida Engineering Day, or Engineering Week, and we mixed it with the Fort Hammer. And we're all very proud. I think those of you drove it would agree with the newspaper. It's spectacular. It's the scenery and the way it's set up, and it's just beautiful. For that, I'm going to turn it over to our AECOM that was with us from the get-go, because they did such a fine job. You will see a repeat action on Braden River Bridge Crossing, just as pretty and just as beautiful. The only exception is four-lane. That we managed to do. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Darren Carrier with AECOM.
Thank you, Seiya. Good morning. My name is Darren Carrier. I was a project manager for AECOM, and it really was a pleasure to work on that bridge. It took many years. Like I said, it went through the permitting process, the design process, and if there ever was, like Seiya said, a team effort, that was it. We, quite a few disciplines within our organization. We had the roadway with drainage, signing and pavement marking, lighting, environmental permitting, and the biggest part of it also was structures. I've got our structural engineers, the engineer of record, Mark Eichholz, along with me, and like I said, it's a spectacular bridge now. You drive it, it's a very nice, smooth bridge. It was quite a process to go through, and it really is very prideful, the idea that you can go back and say, you were part of the team that helped put that project in place. So, it's not very often we get a chance to say that, that it's such a spectacular bridge, but we really feel like it's a landmark within the community here. Thank you again. Mark?
Give the bridge details.
Yeah, I thought it was a very successful project. Johnson Brothers did an outstanding job of building it, and we collaborated very well together and handled all of the issues out there. I remember the ribbon-cutting day when we had the 5K race. I was out there, it was a beautiful day, gorgeous bridge, and we think it's an excellent opportunity for the county here for future. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a little hot that day. It rained.
Our Johnson Brother Contractor Representative is in the room. Did you want to speak or say a few words?
He was trying not to.
After what you put us through, you should. They did a very good job. Obviously, any construction activity you do, there are unforeseen conditions and things that pops here and there, and we were able with professional staff that was on board to deal with it or seek the AECOM assistance, and in addition, we had HDR as our CEI, basically construction inspection. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Charles with Johnson Brothers.
Good morning, Tom Charles with Johnson Brothers. I was the project manager for the Fort Hammer Bridge. I know I've seen a few of you out on the bridge from time to time. I just wanted to say, you know, for all the projects I've worked with, I think the team, really, between all the different consultants, the county, the inspectors, it was really just a great effort for everybody to work through every little problem. I mean, projects of this size are always going to have conflicts along the way with, you know, obvious things don't tie in exactly the way you want it, and I think everybody worked really well together to handle those on the spot and mitigate them as quickly as possible and keep this project going. So, I think, my personal view, I look at this project as a huge success, and I was, it's a pleasure to be involved with it and working for the county over the past couple of years, and I get the joy of driving over it every day, so it's a nice, smooth ride. Thank you.
No cranny, yes.
This concludes our presentation, unless there's any questions.
We have a couple commissioners here, Seiya, that would like to talk, starting with Commissioner Whitmore.
I also want to recognize Commissioner Jane Monhamon is here, and she was part of the original part where we were actually going to do it as a federal, get federal monies, and then, some of the commission thought, and we all thought, that it could maybe be done faster if we did it, and there would be no problems, and then, like you said, the general or whoever he was contested it, and then we had to do a whole environmental impact study. So, it actually took the exact same amount of years if we would have done it with federal monies, instead of us paying for it with our impact fees, but we didn't know it then. But it is a beautiful bridge, and Commissioner Monhamon, I think your name is on it, too, just so you know. So, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Benak?
Yeah, the 100-year bridge, as we like to refer to it, because that's about how long the bridge took to actually bring to fruition, and I'm afraid that's kind of been getting to be the standard for new roadways, unfortunately. But, Seiya, you said we couldn't pass muster with getting the four lanes done, and Carol alluded to the fact, I always tell people, when I tell people the story of the bridge, when they say, why isn't it four lanes? I said, well, it was kind of the worst of both worlds, that we turned down federal money because we could do it cheaper and faster ourselves, and then we got caught up in the federal process anyway, but we didn't have any federal money, so we did what we could. Is that basically what you meant when you said we couldn't pass muster? Because I look at it as, we would love to have done it at four lanes, but we decided to fund it out of impact fees, and the additional costs that came about because of being put through the federal process basically made it where we couldn't do four lanes. Is that kind of what you meant?
One part of it is absolutely, you're correct. That was some of that. The other, the second part to it was that, you know, '07, '08, we were going through the downturn. All those applications for development north of the county and what have you, they were all falling apart. We couldn't, we couldn't show traffic circulation and what have you, the demand is there for the four-lane bridge. In addition, the obstacle was, how do you have a four-lane bridge with the two approaches being two lanes? So, the reason the two-lane was moved up in the calendar on the Upper Manatee and Fort Hammer section was to demonstrate that, as much as we're putting the two-lane bridge in the middle of it, we want to improve those two facilities also for traffic circulation and what have you. So, a combination of all were the causes of four-lane being passed to the sideline, and we pursued the two-lane full force.
Okay, and I would encourage people to walk the bridge. I took the opportunity, it wasn't during one of the major events, but I decided I wanted to go out there and take my dog and walk across the bridge, met the most wonderful people at the top of the bridge, who lived in river wilderness, who had just moved here, said how much they loved this area, how much they loved the bridge, and they live right there. So, I encourage people, walk the bridge if you get a chance. It is an incredible view up the river that you get from the top of the bridge, and it's a really nice walk, and then you've got the, you know, the Fort Hammer, you've got the park right there on the, right there on the river to park at and to stop at with a lot of facilities, so it's really a cool place. So, congratulations to everybody who worked on it.
It's just beautiful. I totally agree with you. It's just a beautiful bridge. Thank you.
Commissioner Servia?
Well, I'm new up here on the dais. I have watched this bridge for decades in the community, and I know it was, you know, for a long time, many, many years, a line on a map, you know, and it just kind of illustrates how important it is to think ahead decades and sometimes 100 years, to make sure that we have the infrastructure that we'll need. So, not only has this bridge united the north and the south parts of the county, but I think the whole community with the 5Ks and everything that it stands for and has become, it's a real asset. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, you know, we all have our stories about the bridge, the 100-year bridge, but we're here today to celebrate the award of the 2018 Highway Bridge Best Project, Southeast Magazine, and that is really, really something. You know, I think, Seiya, you mentioned this, and the first time that an award has been made on this, and it just goes to show you, you guys all worked so hard. You made this dream finally come true. Okay, yeah, I'll go along. I hear, you know, about it's not four-lane, but you know what, so what? We did what we could. You guys were awesome. You built a beautiful, beautiful bridge. I don't think there's a commissioner up here that probably hasn't walked it. I can remember going on it when it was under construction. I do remember you. You know, so it really is a feat to be proud of, seriously. So, I just thank you for bringing that bridge and making it something that we have here in Manatee for all the residents to be proud of and enjoy, and you guys really should be proud. So, thank you.
We thank you, we do. By the way, I might add, we did that on budget, we left over money on the table.
I love you, Seiya. Thank you very much. Great job. Thank you. Okay, next item is the results first internship program. I think I saw Sherry or maybe Xavier coming in to go over that with us.
They're on their way in, Mr. Chairman. They're out in the hall. There you go.
Good morning, morning. Happy to be here. I'm presenting the results first internship program, spring semester. It's a passion project for me, because in 2016, I myself was an intern who was lucky enough to get full-time employment here. So, this program was made to recruit and retain talent within Manatee County, and it started, long story short, we, I went in the Department Director's office, I said, is it all right if I open my internship up again? And she said, I have a better idea. How about we do more than one intern? And so, our pilot program was in 2017. We had four interns, all successful projects, and in the second 2018 summer, we had 11 interns. So, I've been grateful to have the mentorship of current Deputy County Administrator Corrie, helping us get this project going. The process, a little of it, is we do project finding. So, I present maybe 10, 20 times across the county, asking them for projects, giving them examples, and they give them to me. A lot of them are projects that they need to get done, but they don't have the time to, or they're kind of pet projects that they've had on the back of their minds, and this gives them a chance for a student to come in and do it. We picked the projects, hoping to get about 14 for this coming summer, but we did five. These are the surplus projects, so projects we couldn't get to. But after we picked the projects, we form a team, and the team is a supervisor, a mentor, and a HR liaison, because we found that HR is a very important part. This is a very unique situation in which we hire somebody knowing their end date, which is normally what you don't want when you get a job, is when you know your end date. We've had great success, and that's why I have over here Michaela Lindykamp. She was here last summer and the summer before that, and now she works for us full-time in neighborhood services. We had about 20% of our interns get full-time employment through Manatee County. One intern was actually working for Manatee County and was promoted to a position directly related to their project. So, those are the things that we want to kind of instill with this program. Part of their, these individuals are working for 12 weeks, a little bit longer for spring, but professional development is a big part, so we help them, if they need help with resumes, we give them references afterwards, but a major part is public speaking. And so, we said, what is the craziest way to get them to public speaking? How about have them present to the bosses on their first public speaking engagement? And after this, they're going to present on their departments to us, and then they'll present to their departments their final project, then they'll present to leadership, and on April 16th, you guys will see their finished product in a work session, so they get to present to you and the public the great, successful projects they're doing. I don't want to steal any of their thunder, so what I'm going to do is let them present. First, the supervisor will present themselves, mentor, and then the intern will tell you a brief summary of what their project is. They're not going to try and spoil the final result for you, so it's a little exciting on April 16th. So, I'm going to start with the first project and let them come up and speak.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Administrator, and County Attorney. My name is Sheila Balisteros, and I'm the Budget Division Manager for Financial Management. And here with me, I have my two colleagues in this project, Claudia Campos and Haley Harrison.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney. My name is Claudia Campos, and I am the Senior Budget Manager in Financial Management, and I am the mentor for this project and for our intern.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Attorney, and County Administrator. My name is Haley Harrison. I am a senior at the University of South Florida Sarasota, Manatee. I'm double-majoring in finance and risk management, and my project is creating a citizens' budget in brief. I'm taking the adopted 2019 budget, yes, I'm super excited, too. I've taken the adopted budget and putting it in a more simplified version of that so that the taxpayers, the taxpayers can see where there's money going, so I'm trying to use their perspective and the perspective I had before coming on board, so thank you.
All right, good luck.
April.
We want to see that.
Can't wait for that one.
April 16.
I think she needs to be our intern.
Don't feel any pressure.
We're too excited now.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Chris Bees. I'm the Mobility Coordinator with Public Works. I'm here representing my intern, Connor McDonald. Unfortunately, he had a class conflict, so he wasn't able to be here today. But I do want to introduce him, first off, as Xavier mentioned, he'll be back here shortly to talk with all of you about the project. Connor McDonald's a student at USF. He's a first-year grad student in Masters of Urban and Regional Planning. He's currently working on the continuation of the development of the pedestrian bicycle and trail strategy. This is to expand project selection and prioritization of methods that include all-motorized and non-motorized mobility from a complete street holistic perspective, and this effort will ultimately- holistic perspective. And this effort will ultimately help to feed the mobility plan as well as help to assist in providing the direction for the mobility team. Thank you.
Great. Look forward to that.
Good job. We can't wait to meet him.
Melissa.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Melissa Nell. I am the Division Manager for the Volunteer and Education Division of Manatee County's Parks and Natural Resources Department. And I'm here to introduce our fantastic team, Michelle and Allison. And I just wanted to say thank you. This is our second year participating in this program, and it is really fantastic. And we're really grateful that you all support it.
Yeah.
Good morning, County Leadership. My name is Michelle Leahy. I'm the Volunteer Coordinator for Parks and Natural Resources, and this is my second time being a mentor for this program.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Allison Clark, and I am a Senior Public Health Major at USF. And my project is focusing on promoting inclusivity in our community. I'm creating an exhibit for the Rye Preserve Nature Center, which will highlight an incredibly important but underserved population in Florida. This population is often referred to as the invisible workers of Florida, and I'm really excited to help show how important they are.
Great. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Azara, Information and Outreach. I'm fortunate this morning to introduce two of our student interns. But at first, I'd like to echo what Melissa Nell just mentioned. This is a great program. It allows us to hire some extremely talented individuals and have them laser focus in on projects that are falling behind or we otherwise wouldn't get to. So, we had the, the good fortune this semester to hire two interns. And since I'm making Melissa take photos, I'll introduce her, her intern, Ben Sutherland. He's a sophomore, I believe, at Florida State University, taking a semester off, but he's a digital production, digital media production intern.
Ben?
I'm actually a junior.
Good for you.
He's serious?
So, yeah, I'm a junior at Florida State University, majoring in digital media production. My project is basically, I'm making the first ever 2018 annual report video. And I'm also doing some commissioner videos for you guys. So, look forward to that.
Great. Good to know.
Good morning. I'm Rachel Taft, the Digital Content Coordinator. And I'm Natalia's mentor, and she's already been a great pleasure to work with. But I'll let her talk about her project.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Natalia Lopez. I'm from Venezuela, and I have a Bachelor Degree in Arts and Communication and Social Media. Currently, I'm going to Manatee Technica College. I'm taking a program on digital video technology. And my project is going to be use social media as a primary source, creating emergency messages during hurricane season that are helpful for people to know what is happening and to help them to prevent the risk. And I'm going to do this making some short videos, taking photos, and graphics. Thank you.
Great.
And without your continued support and funding, this project would be impossible. And as you see, we have continuations of programs, which is great, because if we can get somebody to lay the groundwork, and then another intern and another intern, that's kind of what we want to happen. And like I said, this is kind of a pipeline that we want to go from talented individuals who might not be looking at local government and going into Manatee County government. So, thank you guys again, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Great job, all of you.
Mr. Chair? The one, the ones, the one intern under Melissa Nell, the last, the last one, I couldn't understand. It was interesting what you were, what your project was, but I couldn't understand it. I missed it. Could you explain it again? I think you, yeah, it sounded very interesting, and I just want to grasp what you're doing.
Okay. I'm making an exhibit at the Rye Preserve Nature Center.
The Rye?
Rye Preserve. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay. I've selected an underserved population to create an exhibit about, and there's activities in it, and a lot of information, like a timeline showcasing their journey from, I don't want to give it away, but.
Yeah, okay. Don't, don't. Okay, that's enough. I got it. So, it's going to be at Rye Preserve, and it's, and you've targeted a certain population that you're going to exhibit. Thank you. Thanks. Good idea.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I move we have accept the proclamations, adopt proclamations.
Second?
Have a motion in the second to accept the proclamations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, proclamations pass seven zero. First one is the Cortez Commercial Fishing. Welcome to the chambers again this year. But I think, before I read, I'd just like to, I think, make a comment that I find it, you know, I think all of us up here always have, get questions about growth and, and how people come to this county and things like that. And I kind of reflected back on it this morning and thought, well, we started the year with the fair, and then last weekend, we rolled into the, the boat regatta. And this weekend, we go to the seafood fest, you know? And it's so, I've been to, you know, two. I'll certainly be to the seafood fest. I can tell you, you know, the crowds that come out there, it's obvious as to why people want to live in Manatee County. And they're all just great events, and this just adds to it. And then, of course, next month, we roll into spring training.
Oh, true.
You know? So, I mean, it's just an ongoing start to the year when we have most of the visitors here who then subsequently become owners of property here because they're like, wow, this is heaven to live, live here with all this stuff going on. Most of it's very reasonable to go to. And with that, I'd like to read this, whereas 37 years have come and gone, and still the party with the purpose carries on. And whereas music, art, and seafood galore will be served to thousands along the shore. And whereas the Florida Institute for Saltwater Heritage and Cortez Village Historical Society report that they will preserve and prevail through changing tides, quote unquote. Whereas Cortez fishing families now celebrate over 130 years of feeding the multitudes. And whereas the Florida Institute for Saltwater Heritage continues the large-scale habitat restoration project in the Fish Preserve, the largest and last undeveloped stretch of shoreline on Sarasota Bay. And whereas the theme for the 2019 festival is changing tides. And whereas 37th Annual Cortez Fishing Festival will be held on February 16th and 17th, 2019, now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that February 16th and 17th, 2019, shall be known, designated, and set aside as the 37th Annual Cortez Commercial Fishing Festival Days in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 12th day of February 2019, signed by the Chairman of the County Commission, Stephen R. Johnson.
Which is you.
Thank you.
John Steveley, a board member, Florida Institute for Saltwater Heritage. And I really want to underscore inviting you all out to a very, very special occasion, a very special event, because it's a special time and it's a special place. Cortez is the last remaining working waterfront commercial fishing village in the state of Florida. Very, very special. Very special community. This is an astonishing accomplishment, almost 200 volunteers. All this money is going towards the protection, preservation of Sarasota Bay shoreline through our fish preserve, approximately 100 acres immediately east of the village and along the Sarasota Bay shoreline. So, this, it is an astonishing accomplishment by this community. Please come out. Again, special time and a very special place. And I know Jane has, we have many, many people to thank.
This year, I kind of wanted to thank some of the absolute particular people that we work with here in the county to get this festival on the books and get out the door. And it grows every year. So, I want to thank Kevin Sheeran, who's with Transportation. We have a great partnership with the bus system and transportation to get our attendees from GT Bray to the festival without having to get in their cars and deal and, you know, drive in the traffic. I want to thank Melissa Nell, who was here earlier with her, with her intern and Coral Bass with GT Bray and Parks and Recreation, because they allow us to have the parking we need to put those people on the bus to get them out to the festival. And then I also wanted, I also want to thank Charlie Hunsiger and Nan Summers because they just work with us as a village, and they work with us as a preserve to get to where we need to be to get, you know, they help us find grants. They help us, they just help us to work, to do what we need to do to restore the preserve to what it needs to be. The Scott Wood, who took Andy LaValle's place for solid waste last year, we didn't, we usually have three dumpsters on site in order to take care of the trash that's created through the festival. Well, over the years, we've worked with them. We've started a recycle program. We, we work with them to present to the public how to best serve our community by not making so much waste. And last year, we had two on site and didn't fill either one of them. So, this year, we're going to have only one on site. So, it, what we're, the way they're taking care of the garbage that's created through the festival is just mind-blowing to me. I don't, I don't even know how they do it, but they do it. So, I'm very excited because our footprint from that standpoint is shrinking a lot. So, I want to thank Scott Wood, who's been working with us, and Waste Pro, especially Mike at Waste Pro, who's working directly with us and is actually a sponsor of the event because they realize that they can get the word out. They can make people understand the opportunity there. And of course, the clerk of the court, their office in partnership with Florida Maritime Museum, with Cassie Schlesser, who has always been a champion for us, and we, we love her to death. She, when Chip was alive, she worked so hard with us. And then Kristen Sweeting, who's the director out there, and her whole team, they're just family there in the village, and they work really well with us to make this event. And we also have a board member who is from University of Florida IFAS, Angela Collins. She's with Sea Grants, and John used to be our representative on the board with Sea Grants. And she just, she works so hard for us from the environmental standpoint. She's there. She and John will both be doing dock talks. We've had, put that in place several years ago. Great information right out on the docks to explain the environment, to explain the processes that our village goes through. And my son, when he saw this year's, when he saw this year's theme, changing tides and the octopus with all the signs wrapped around Florida, he said, wow, Mom, are you guys making a political statement? I said, no, we're not making a political statement. This is our reality in Cortez Village. We have, over the years, struggled with every single thing, every single sign that's on this little, on this little octopus in his hands. And we continue to do so. But this is a village that for 130 years has done what it's done, has found itself grounded in the preservation of its historic and cultural value, and will continue to do that because it is the economics of the village. So, we're not making a political statement. We're just stating a reality for us. And we hope everybody can come out and enjoy and help us to continue to do what we do, and especially when it comes to the preserve, because it truly is, and hopefully will one day, be the, the teeny tiny Robinson Preserve on Cortez Peninsula. So, we thank you, and we, we want to welcome the new commissioners, Commissioner Servia, and I see Commissioner Bellamy stepped out. But we hope you guys will come out and join us. We wish you much luck in your, and much success in your term here, terms here. And thank you very much. Come out and see us. We look forward, Saturday, 12:45. Meet me at the stage.
Well, it starts at a, what time does it start, Jane? Does it start at 10:00 or 11:00?
Starts at 10:00 AM, 10 to 6:00, Saturday and Sunday. But we'll have introductions. The schedule's changed a little bit, so it's not until 1:00 this year instead of 12:00. Okay? Thanks.
Wear your shorts and sunscreen.
All right. I, I just wanted to say, you know, that it's, the, the fishing festival is something that I always, always try to make. It's a great festival. It's an opportunity to see what's going on. And you, like us, have to deal with continued growth because the festival is growing every single year. And I can imagine that this year, people will be there and be so concerned about the red tide and how it's affected our fishing families. So, I hope you're ready in your dock talks. I imagine you're going to get probably a lot of questions. And of course, I'm glad that you mentioned all of your connections with people, because we are trying to work together to address these kind of things. I've had the opportunity, I usually, my husband and I are big park and ride people. We drive as far as we can, then get on our bikes, so we don't have to deal with traffic. But last time, I, I was with some folks that couldn't ride their bike, and we did take the bus. What fun that is to sit, I mean, yeah, it's not like you don't get stuck in traffic a little bit, but you're on the bus with a bunch of people, and they're all talking about how great things are. I encourage you guys to do that, to do that park and ride. It's really fun to see the excitement that everybody has as they go to the fishing festival. So. And as blessings would have it, we actually were able to partner this year with the Baptist Church just up the street from us on 100th. And they're going to allow us only on Saturday because, of course, church is on Sunday. But they're going to allow us to park, and we have a partnership with the monkey bus to bring people from there to 116th entrance to the festival too. So, we've, we're just trying to make it. We want people to come. We want them to have a great time. And we don't want them to be majorly stressed in doing so, although we know we'll wipe away all that stress once you get out to us. But we, we do, we do know our partnership with Manatee County and the bus service is just, that's been happening for a number of years. And I, I think that's one of our biggest blessings that we've, we've been able to provide that service through, through the county. So. Great. Can I share with more questions?
I, I've got, maybe missed a couple since you.
Hardly.
Yeah, since you've, since you've started them. We actually have a group of about 10 of us that ever, and we never see each other the whole year, but we all meet at a certain place in the middle where the trash cans are. I don't know if they're going to be there this year. But we've been doing that for years and years and years and years. And just seeing all the people there and seeing the great things and, you know, and I encourage everybody to go to Cortez, not just this weekend either. They have great restaurants. It's just nice to chill out and see what they're, get a, take a deep breath and a chill bill and see what the real world's like. And, and these guys have endured many things. This net ban about devastated Cortez, I was around, and I actually voted against the net ban because I supported Cortez. And many fishermen, families, the Guthries, Fulfords, all of them, they lost their livelihood because of that. So, you know, anything, and then this red tide, it's about killed them, and I'm sure it has. And thank God, everything's, you know, happening now. But we, we need to support these guys. These are the salt of the earth. This is why the people come to our county, is we are the only fishing village in, I'm not even sure the destination, if there's any more on the west.
Working fishing village. We know on the west coast where, but may even be in the entire state of Florida. I don't know if there's.
These guys make their living. So, please come and support them.
But thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Engineers Week. I saw a lot of engineers out in the lobby. I think we got a special baby out there, too.
I know.
A slide ruler?
Slide ruler. They probably don't use those anymore.
I don't think so.
Maybe they do.
Good morning. Ciam Malanzar, York County Engineer and Deputy Director, Public Works.
We have to read it. We're all her aunties.
Oh, I can't help it. My grandma genes are coming out. I don't, I'm not an engineer, but I have been accused of knowing how to speak engineering sometimes. This is a proclamation board of county commissioners, Manatee County, Florida. Whereas February 17th through the 23rd, 2019 is designated as National Engineers Week. And whereas this week is also celebrated throughout the local engineering community. And whereas engineers help design, construct, and maintain the infrastructure and the facilities that contribute to a high quality of life for all residents of Florida, its growth depends on engineers executing innovative, creative, high-quality solutions to technical problems. And whereas engineers are bound by their ethical canons to hold paramount the safety, health, and welfare of the public, promote social and economic interests of the engineering profession, and stimulate and develop professional concepts among all engineers through education and in practice. And whereas engineers in Manatee County contribute directly to the quality of life in Manatee County by working with others to improve the safety and quality of our roads, our houses, our workplaces, our water, our environment, and the products we use. And whereas members of the American Society of Civil Engineers, Florida Engineering Society, American Water Works Association, Florida Water Environment Association, American Public Works Association, and the Florida Institute of Consulting Engineers are making strides to interact with the public sector and local schools to prepare future engineers to main, maintain our economic leadership and quality of life. And whereas it is fitting that we recognize and honor the continuing contributions of America's engineers by observing Engineers Week with the theme, Engineers Invent Amazing.
America's engineers by observing Engineers Week with the theme, Engineers Invent Amazing. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that February 17th through the 23rd, 2019 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Engineers Week in Manatee County, Florida. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this 12th day of February, 2019. Signed by our Board Chair, Stephen R. Johnson. And I don't know who's going to speak, but you can bring her up for it anytime to represent-
I don't have her to speak.
Thank you.
Good morning. CM Alanzar, Public Works. Once again, it's a tradition, uh, this time of year, we celebrate National Engineering Week. With that, we celebrate our own team in Manatee County. The, uh, over the year, we're, this year, we're 30 strong engineers onboard. In comparison, it's a loss of 11 from last year. Predominantly, it's due to market-driven phenomena. Uh, I'm a true believer of what you get is what you paid for. And the team we have established in Manatee County have demonstrated that over and over and over. I'll give you a simple example. Uh, 53rd Avenue Project, uh, 12 million construction estimate, engineering costs would have been 15 to 18% of that, that money. So the, 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 the saving is realized by farming it out versus doing it in-house. And I assure you, the salaries do not equal the amount of the consulting work that you would have ended up paying. In addition, just because a job is designed and gone to bid, the headache really starts day one when you break grounds. Everything that could go wrong will go wrong. That's Murphy's Law. It is the assignment of this team to look into it in detail and professionally and make a determination, is it justifiable expenditure or not? And often get into some sort of a, if you want to call it dispute resolution or what have you, but we, we, our function is in twofold in that arena. One, to establish your mission and objectives and goals. The other is really protection of the taxpayers' funds. That is, that is also our role. With that, uh, as a tradition, we, we bring our, uh, team in and let them introduce themselves to you, where they come from, uh, what they're doing in Manatee County. After that, we have the President of American Society of Civil Engineers, Molly Williams with the American Society, that would receive the proclamation and then speak to it. As much as it's a National Engineering Week, I don't consider it necessarily a holidays, but we, we allow our, our team to join Florida Engineering Societies or other activity in that week. As such, they participated in the math count in the St. Stephen's Schools that took place over a week ago where all the middle school students, uh, region-wide were, were the contestants and they did the test examination, uh, grading. With that, I'm going to start with a face you all know, Tom Gershman.
Are you better before he, with the little one?
And the face we all know as well, who is Abigail. Hey, hello, Boo Boo. Um, well, since you're stealing the show, um, as you all know, I'm the Stormwater Engineering Division Manager and behind me I have Ken Cohn and John Parry, who are also engineers within Stormwater Engineering. We take on the various, um, tasks within Stormwater, whether it be, uh, regulatory review, um, design and permitting for county projects, and, uh, re-certification, certification for our CRS and our MPDS permits. Right, Boo Boo? Yeah? You say hello?
Hi.
And my wife is hiding back, back there, but she is here as well. And I just wanted to say my many thanks for this board, our county administrator, county administrator, excuse me, our county attorney, and our fellow intern, fellow attorneys, and of course, my boss, who is a very great man and deserves as much respect as he can gain, CM Alanzar. Appreciate you all very much. And of course, my wife. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good morning. Uh, my name is John Perry with Stormwater, and I've been with the county for 10 years.
Oh, good.
Nice.
Thanks, John.
Oh, universe, I graduated from the University of Rhode Island in 1988. So it's been a long time.
Morning. Ken Cohn, Public Works, Stormwater. I graduated from the University of Florida. I've been with the county for seven years.
Good.
Good morning.
Scott May, Utility Engineering Division Manager. And as you know, with the utilities, we basically are not only doing in-house design, we also do development plan review. We do projects that are sent out for other outside consultants, design to review those to make sure everything meets and then along with the construction issues that come up along the way. I've been with Manatee County about four years and I went to Tri-State University and I'll let the rest of the team introduce themselves.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm Tom Katie. I'm a project engineer with utility engineering. Uh, I went to the University of Florida and I've been here for about three and a half years now.
Hello. My name is Shay Shaun with Utility Engineering. Been with the county for about 10 years. Graduated from, uh, University of South Florida and I do the CIP projects, capital improvement projects for utilities.
Big job.
My name is Paul Haas. I graduated from the University of South Florida. I've been here for about two and a half years.
Cody Kime, Class 2016 USF. Go Bulls.
Michelle Adijumo. I am the newest member of the Utilities Engineering Division and I graduated from both Florida State University and University of Florida.
Hey. Nice girl. She's got some level wanny.
Morning. My name is Chris Mowbray and I'm the Highway Engineering Division Manager and I'm also a plan engineer. I'll explain that later. When I got back to the office last year, I had to, I had to leave right after this meeting to take care, excuse me, some family business. But when I got back to the office, I had heard all this raving that Mickey Palmer had done about me and I wanted to thank him today for that. Hopefully that event in the parking lot, um, helped, helped you out. For those that don't know, about 30 days after last year, I was walking along Main Street here about 50 feet away from the alley and I saw this guy coming up in a sporty car with this window rolled down. And it was Mickey. So I yelled out to him, hey Mickey, thanks so much for the kind words. I really do appreciate it. And he gave me the thumbs up and I, and I yelled back to him. I said, but make sure you get that nail out of the tire. Well, he, he like, you know, stops and he's like, what? What are you talking about? In his radio announcer voice. Um, what are you talking about? So I, I'm thinking, okay, I've got a chance here that maybe I got it right or I didn't get it wrong, or got it right or I got it wrong. And so as I walked up, uh, I noticed that there was a nail in his tire, left front. And I said, there you go, right there. And he just didn't believe me. So he gets out of his car, sees it, and he says, how in the world were you able to do that? You were 50 feet away. And I said, well, you know, I am an engineer. And, um, so, uh, you know, I worked with him back in the eighties. I worked with Misty and Misty's husband, Joaquin Servia, he was a boss of mine. For those who don't know it, I was in the planning department for 11 years. That's how I got the plan engineer name. I almost got converted, but not fully. And, um, from Richard Wilford's Flying Magical Pencils to Jerome Gaskowski, excuse me, Jerome Gaskowski, Wayne Roberts, Harry Mendenhall, all these great bosses I've had, I've always tried to collect everything that they taught me, package it into one thing. And this is my eighth year with this guy. And I'll tell you right now, I call him the William Shatner of our office. He is the, he is the negotiator.
We know that.
Saves the counties millions of dollars every year. And, um, uh, he really makes the, you know, come to work, makes me want to grab that door. And, uh, thank you so much for the time. I'll introduce, or excuse me, my staff is the Highway Engineering Group. Here they are.
Never heard speak that much.
That's a first.
I know.
Hi, good morning. Uh, my name is Stanley Fu. Uh, I'm a highway engineer.
Doctor Fu.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm responsible for in-house roadway design and plan review. I received my PhD degree from Louisiana State University. Uh, my master and bachelor's degree from Tongji University from China. Thank you.
Thank you. Good girl.
Morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Dr. Puni Bonifils. I'm a senior engineer specialist, highway engineer. I've been with the county for 10 years. I'm working on roadway design and back fee credit application. And I got my bachelor from Haiti, my master from Belgium, and my PhD from University of South Florida. Thank you.
You can speak French really well.
Merci.
Merci. Yeah.
Good morning. My name is Gregory Bergman, working for Highway Division. I'm doing road design, graduated university in Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Steve Laney. I'm the, uh, Bridge Engineer, Instruction Engineer for the county. Uh, been with county for about three year, uh, three years, closing on four. And I graduated from West Virginia University in 1985.
I would like to add, it's like that Visa MasterCard commercial, priceless, bridge engineer in-house.
Yeah. It's only one though. Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners and County Administrator, County Attorney. Um, I'm Jeff Streetmadder. Managed the project management division. Basically, we manage projects, um, all the water, sewer, roads, bridges, treatment plant projects. We work under CM Alanzar and all the engineering group. They do a lot of our projects. We rely upon kind of the mutual expertise of the entire team, uh, to produce the projects and then as CM said, uh, take them all the way through construction. I've been with the county coming up on about 10 years, um, graduated from the University of Florida. So I'll let my team introduce themselves. We have a wonderful, diverse group of, um, professional engineers and that's what, who we rely on to manage a project and, uh, take care of the interest of the county.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mike Sterp, born in Winter Haven, Florida. Went to school at the University of Central Florida. I've been practicing engineering here in the state of Florida a little over 30 years. I've been here at the county just short of five.
I was, uh, after the last presentation, I was banging my head that I did not introduce Michael. You know, on Fort Hammer Bridge, we had two project engineer, uh, or project manager. One was Kent Buntrigger, who started the, the whole project. He is now the, uh, the airport engineer, uh, working under, uh, the, the, uh, Director of Airport. Mike took over after Kent, uh, left that, for that job and did a very fine job staying on top of all the pay apps, uh, all the nitty-gritty of the conflicts or what have you, coordinated with staff with the answers and what have you. So what I'm doing is what I failed to do in the earlier presentation, acknowledging Michael and all his effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay, Michael.
All right. Good morning. My name is Anthony Benitez. Um, I graduated from University of South Florida and I've been at the, been at the county almost eight years as a project manager, working on various projects.
Welcome. Awesome.
Hello, good morning. My name is Anwin. Uh, this is my second week here.
Second week?
Second week. Uh, graduated from Cal Poly Pomona in California, uh, working there for two years, uh, came to New Orleans, Louisiana for the Corps of Engineer, worked there for about nine, 10 years, and I'm here. So looking forward to working with everybody here.
Good. Corps of Engineers to work for.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jim Runberg and I've been with county for two months now. I went to engineering school at North Dakota State University in Fargo, North Dakota, and I relocated here from Minnesota. I'm excited to be here, be part of the team and excited for the warmth. Thank you.
I was going to say, for the warmth and the sun, quality of life.
Hello. Um, I'm Dan Garner. I was born in Branson, raised in Palmetto, went to USF. I've been here with the county for seven months.
Good. Welcome.
Local boy.
Yeah.
Wow.
Good morning. Eric Schreier. I'm a Manatee County native, Manatee High School graduate, class of '88. Uh, graduated UCF. I think, I believe I graduated with you.
Oh, you did?
Yes. So, um, yeah, graduated from UCF in '97. Spent about 19 years in the private sector as a consultant and I've been at the county for about two and a half years now.
Okay.
Good morning. Tony Russo with Project Management. I've been with the county three years. I'm a UF graduate.
Good.
Good morning. My name is, uh, Alejandro Gonzalez. I'm a graduate of Mercy University. I've been with the county for a little over one year.
Good.
Bob Halbach. I've graduated from Michigan Technological University and have been working in the area for 35 years. And next week will be one year here at the county.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, my name is Mukunda Gopal. Uh, I'm the Traffic Systems Engineer with the Traffic Design Division. Uh, as part of the division, uh, we touch various aspects of engineering, um, like signal timings, uh, signal design, signing and payment marking. Uh, we manage the traffic count program as well as the, um, crash history, uh, related, uh, stuff. So, uh, very, um, glad to be part of the very dedicated team. Um, I've been with the county for, uh, five years and I graduated with, uh, from, uh, University of Nebraska-Lincoln. Thank you.
Good job.
I might want to add that this year, meeting of the Shawls Group, which all had a conflict, uh, with an event with this kid at school, and he apologized, uh, but this is his team.
Yeah. I remember from last year.
Hi, good morning. I'm Trisha Hartzell. I've spent most of my career in North Carolina and Charlotte, um, about 15 years, both in the public and private sector. I graduated from the University of North Carolina and Charlotte. And I moved down here, spent about four years with the Florida Department of Transportation, and I'm coming up on my year here in traffic design.
Good. Great.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, my name's Negan. I'm Traffic Signal Timing Engineer with County Traffic Management Center. I've been with county over almost two years by, by the end of this month. Um, before that, I was a traffic engineer with Chicago Department of Transportation for over 20 years.
Wow.
As, as you all know, Traffic Management Center, uh, one of the task is to make timing changes in the real time. When we saw the, the big backs up during the incident, so we'll make timing adjustments to make the best, the traffic flow, uh, in the city and city, in the county, the major streets. Also, we do the, the timing changes for the special event, such as last week for the regatta. We have enough staff in our Traffic Management Center, so we'll make timing changes for those locations affected by the incident, by the event. And, uh, in addition, when we have big hurricane, uh, we implement those evacuation route signal timings, such as a last time for the Irma. Um, of course, we do not want that happen, but we have to be prepared if that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Important.
Good morning, everyone. And I am Nelson Galeano, Transportation System Engineer, Transportation Planning Division. Uh, I am from Colombia, uh, have a master in transportation planning and traffic engineering from Stuttgart in Germany, and I have an MBA here in America. Uh, what we do is the project review from concurrency for transportation. And we do also transportation planning issues like pedestrian bicycle strategy. And you will see us with the mobility plan and also with the mobility team. Uh, our staff, um, we have a PhD from Oregon and an OED engineer from, also from Oregon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning again. Crispys, Mobility Coordinator with Public Works. Uh, just want to introduce myself a little bit further. I've only been with the county for about a little bit over six months. I previously worked with FDOT, uh, and prior to that was resident Pennsylvania with, uh, Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for about 10 years as well. Graduated from the University of Pittsburgh and, uh, extremely excited to be here. Thank you.
Good.
Good morning. I'm Neil Burnwood, Transportation Planning Division. Coming up on three years now with the county. I've graduated from Portland State University in Oregon, as Nelson mentioned, and approximately 15 years of experience. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mary Wahid, and I work with the Transportation Planning Division, and I've been here for a little bit over one year. Thank you.
Your engineering team. With that, I'm gonna turn over to Molly Williams and Mr. Marquis from American Society of Civil Engineers, who receives the proclamation.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your time this morning. Engineers, men and women, we take on this task because we want to improve the world. We want to make it better. So we are problem solvers here for you and with the goal of leaving a better world for people after us. So thank you very much for recognizing us. It's an awesome career to take your time to be in. I have 25 years of experience, 20 of those years here in Florida. I actually started in Florida working for CIA in 1998, but have had the opportunity to continue to bring some really wonderful projects to the region and appreciate, again, your time to recognize us this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Marquis Bing. I am current president of the American Society of Civil Engineers Sun Coast Branch. I would like to say thank you to Manatee County for the recognition of Engineers Week. During Engineers Week, we seek to increase the understanding and interest in engineering and technology careers. There is a host of events that are going on during Engineers Week. One is the toothpick bridge contest that we have for our local students. We're also providing a, we're also having a joint awards banquet for our locals, with our local societies. ASCE also provides scholarships to high school seniors, local high school seniors and local college students pursuing a career in civil engineering. That's it. We'd like to just say thank you.
Thank you.
For having us here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the board, Commissioner Whitmore?
No, I didn't. You didn't take me off.
Okay. How about Commissioner Servia?
Yeah, I just want to recognize the great amount of talent in the room, highly educated group. You all are so impressive. And I want to recognize CIA, you know, for your tremendous leadership and your professionalism. I've known you for 30-plus years and you're always just at the top of your game. So thank you very much for that. You know, I thought I would be a civil engineer when I was going to college until the math kicked my butt, and then I became an urban planner. So I have a lot of respect for you guys. And what I always like to remember is engineers can create anything that God couldn't. So you guys do a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The math kicked my butt as well. But, yeah, I think, I think Commissioners know how much I enjoy Engineers Week every year, and CIA, it's always great to see you and your team. And I'm just reminded once again of all the, you know, all the engineers I've worked with over the years in my construction law practice. And every now and then, you know, most of the faces here I don't recognize because they are just, they are behind-the-scenes heroes, you know, keeping us safe, keeping us healthy with what you do. And, you know, you guys don't get nearly the kind of recognition that you are deserving of. This nation's infrastructure is dependent on what engineers do every day. And so I just want you guys to know, it's not lost on me. And yes, every now and then, we find ourselves in little court battles and we have to call on the likes of Chris Mowbray to provide excellent testimony for us. But by and large, we don't see you guys, we don't have to see you guys in a courtroom setting, and that means you're behind-the-scenes, doing the work that needs to be done and doing it excellently. So thanks, thanks to all the men and women.
Thank you, guys.
You know, I gotta tell you, being up here on this dais, you probably know how many times we depend on you guys, and you never cease to amaze me. You're always on top of your game. You guys don't get enough credit for what you do, truly. And I can tell you that I heard someone say earlier about CIA, I've worked very closely with CIA and some of his, some of the other engineers, and, you know, he really is a negotiator. I was in a meeting with him yesterday afternoon and I saw that. And, you know, without you guys, it would be a different county. So just thank you, and you guys deserve Engineers Week. Enjoy.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to say, I've had the opportunity to work with many, many of these engineers, both in the private and in the public sector. I worked with CIA for, how many years you been here now, CIA?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So I also worked with CIA, with Chris Mowbray, with many of these folks, and Molly and I worked together at Wilson Miller, and Bob Halbach, and Shay Shown. So I will tell you that if you ever get the opportunity to get a request to speak, I get the request occasionally to speak before their local chapters, and we always get to have a great dialogue because we know we have so many challenges facing us and things like stormwater. And these are great people to engage with, to help come up with some of these solutions. So I would encourage the other board members to take the time to maybe get to know some of these folks and seek their expertise, because they really, they work at it, they work at solutions. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Cena? Thank you, CIA. Great job, great job for all of you all. Thank you for what you do for the county. Okay. Well, I think we've pretty well blown through our time certens pretty effectively.
Where are we?
So with that being said, I think just, again, being sensitive to the public, I'm gonna first open this up for future comment on any agenda items from the public. Anybody, I have one person signed up, Mike Meehan, and if there's anybody else after him, they're welcome to come up and have three minutes.
Good morning, Mike Meehan. Slightly under the weather, but I wanted to follow up with the Commissioners today on a rather audacious, I felt, plan that was presented two weeks ago about developing a low-income health delivery package for the county. You all had a chance to read the email. I was pleased that Commissioner Whitmore responded instantaneously to the presentation two weeks ago. I hope some of the other Commissioners will also get dialed into this issue. We had a, we had a consultant in here, I can't remember, two or three years ago, who produced a 60, 70-page report. It wasn't too inspiring, and I think there was maybe one recommendation in there that, I'm not sure if it's been adopted or not, but it was not really a comprehensive solution. And what I'm trying to present today and in the future, hopefully, is a comprehensive solution to the problem. I knew nothing about healthcare three years ago. I don't know if I know that much more about it now, but at least you've got an idea in front of you to talk about and discuss. And I think that's what needs to happen, is that not just Commissioner Whitmore, but some of the other Commissioners need to start feeling passionate about the problem. It is an unresolved problem. It does need to be dealt with, I think, in a better fashion than it's currently being dealt with. So I encourage you to close your door, turn off the cell phone, and start thinking about how to address this plan. What I presented to you last time was kind of a broad outline. As I thought about it more in the past two weeks, I presented other ideas to you yesterday afternoon via email. I would encourage you to develop your own ideas on the topic and contribute to the dialogue so that any momentum that may have been started or developed by this initial proposal can continue, and maybe by the fiscal year 9/30 of this year, we can have something ready to go. It's certainly possible from a financial standpoint. It's certainly possible, I think, from an implementation standpoint. This is a very simple plan. It's not complicated, and that's the beauty of the plan. So I think it's a place to start the dialogue, and I would encourage the Commissioners to continue in that vein. I would also say that if there are naysayers out there on this project, that the false doctrine of perfectionism should not be allowed to get in the way of pursuing this issue. I think it's an issue that we can solve. The EMS program is a classic example of addressing an issue, solving the problem, and now it's the envy of the state, it's the envy of the nation. I don't see why we can't do the same thing in terms of healthcare delivery for low-income people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meehan.
Thanks, Mike.
Commissioner Whitmore?
I just want to make a comment. In all fairness to the board, I've actually been working 42 years continuously in healthcare. So I, you know, I would probably be more into this than some others, where others are more experienced in stuff than I'm totally not. So, and just so you know, the latest email that you sent, Ed sent me an email like at almost 10 o'clock last night to have his, so we do, we are receptive. You may not know that, but he's actually having Jan prepare for it and then maybe look at your proposals and take it to the healthcare advisory board if they feel that it needs to go to see, you know, field out some of your stuff. Those are the experts, you know, they're the advisory. We're the policy setters. So we are listening, Mike, we are. It's just that, it's not like private sector, you're not gonna get an answer right away, but we are taking your information and we are passing it along in the ranks.
Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, just real quick. Mike, I really do appreciate all the emails that you send, and what I really like about them is that most of them are out of the box, and that's what we need to be looking at. We need to figure out a better way to do what we're doing, because what we're doing isn't accomplishing what it should. So I really do appreciate it, and I can tell you, I, for one, read all your emails. Sometimes it's best not to respond in order to try and move things forward, particularly me. So, you know, sometimes I just don't respond so that I can be in the background and just take it in and move behind the scenes until I can get something before the board. So always know that I think all the Commissioners do read your emails and appreciate them.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to come down and speak on a future agenda item? Seeing nobody, we'll close public comment on future agenda items, and we'll now go to what was the 9/45 time certain, which is item number 37, ordinance 19-14, and I believe Mr. Palmer is leading this discussion, or Mr. Clay?
I'll be, I'll be glad to kick it off, Mr. Chair. In your special meeting of January 22nd of this year, you gave, the board gave instruction to my office to advertise for a public hearing and to craft an amendment to section 2-2-22 of the Manatee County Code of Laws as it relates to the position of county administrator. And so we have accomplished that. This is the public hearing for proposed ordinance number 19-14. In a nutshell, we have done two things, actually three things, the simplest of which was to, was to insert gender neutrality throughout this section. That's obviously a very minor item, but the substantive items are, are the addition of a subsection B5, which will now read as follows, assuming this ordinance is adopted by the board today. Quote, "Notwithstanding the above educational requirements, a county employee currently serving as a deputy or assistant county administrator who does not have a university or college degree may be appointed to serve as the acting county administrator for a period not to exceed one year," end quote. And then the second substantive change is that we have eliminated subsection, subsection, let's see, that would be, give me just a second here. We have eliminated subsection I at the very end of the ordinance, which previously required the advertising of a vacancy in the position of county administrator. The elimination of this language will simply, will now simply make it optional as to whether the board wishes to advertise. It obviously makes no sense to advertise the position if you're promoting from within, hence the elimination of that language.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see anybody on the board, so I'll, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to come down and discuss the change in this ordinance? Seeing nobody, Commissioner Trace?
I move to adopt ordinance number 1914 in the form submitted into the record by the county attorney.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Trace, a second by Commissioner Benak to adopt ordinance number 1914 as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay. Going to the next time certain, beach re-nourishment update.
All right, moving along. Short and sweet.
Can we like?
Not you, Charlie.
Wait, Mr. Chair, since we're, it's gonna be about a 10 or 15-minute presentation, is it okay if we take like a two-minute break? Or, or no? Nobody cares? Okay, never mind.
Now, I think we're good.
All right, Charlie.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. Charlie Hansker here, Parks and Natural Resources Department, to present to you today an overview of our beach program. I want to compliment the engineers also in that we're in the room and also the engineer right behind me, Tom Piro with Aptim Company. He and his firm have provided continuous engineering and uninterrupted services to Manatee County for 31 years, developing a deep and rich understanding of our coastal dynamics that we want to talk about today. Because indeed, you know, the beaches of Annarara Island provide us the power to protect property, our infrastructure, and lives. It provides us with open arms to protect and provide homes to sea turtles, shorebirds, and also provides us with the beauty to give us a solitary walk or a sunset. And the management, protection, and interaction with our beaches takes some understanding of how we got to where we are and why we're there. Our agenda today covers introduction of our consultants, the program overview, where we are with, moving forward with re-nourishment efforts, which are almost continuous when you look at the charts, and talk a little bit about the Longbow Pass inlet agreement that we have with the town Longbow Key, because very soon you'll be having a joint meeting with the town, and we want to give you a brief introduction on those points as it comes forward at that meeting. And then close with the discussion of our funding strategies and opportunities relative to the program coming in this fall. Of course, the Aptim program is a full-service company, providing engineering and modeling, the surveys, the services. Emphasis on this slide is that we have been able to take advantage of working with a company that has every aspect of re-nourishment, from planning through implementation and inspections within one particular company. And the project team is behind me. Tom Piro is the lead and principal engineer. Has been working on projects in Manatee County since 2002, I believe was your first effort there. This program began in 1988 for the retention of the companies, its predecessor companies, and some of these individuals have been with the projects since that time. And of course, I also want to introduce Lauren Floyd, who is the senior biologist with the program, and talked a little bit about our connections with her, Susie Fox, our enemy of turtle washing shorebird monitoring person, and all the other beauties that are there and found in our beaches. And so, moving on, the project history here, yeah, I'm not gonna go over every point, but the idea here is from 1989 through 2020, the red identifications are those actual projects that happened. Well, when does sand get on the beach? Well, that's when those kind of happen. But the information between each project is deliberate, it's resplendent with regulation from the federal government, the state of Florida, demonstrations of adequacy, demonstrations of need, and the important monitoring that takes place. So our beaches, again, are a collage of many things, as I mentioned. It's not just blankets and towels. It's a lot to do with a beautiful environment that also provides a very strong protection for the lifestyle that we have on the island and for the tourism that it supports as an economic engine. And re-nourishment, for the layman's perspective, is simply a process to bring sand from the gulf that was lost to erosion, bringing it back onto the beach so that we can have a resiliency through time. And it's a very delicate and yet complex process of heavy equipment. You see there in the foreground is an ocean-going freighter that can go and suck the sand from the bottom, bring it back. freighter that can go and, and suck the sand from the bottom, bring it back ashore from pipes. Heavy equipment like this is working in the saltwater area, you can understand that the mobilization costs for some, for operations like that are very extensive. The sand is pumped ashore and laid out in a beach process. Again, mobilization costs for some of these projects run five to six million dollars before the first element of sand is introduced to the beach, and you can see from one reason, miles of pipeline, heavy equipment, ships and crews and staffs. But the, the process is relatively simple when you think about it. We're bringing sand in a major width, we're adding it in front, and letting the waves shift it around and move it to offshore areas, because a sandy beach is more than just what you see on the surface, it's much like an iceberg. There are components under the water that Tom's going to talk about here in just a minute. But this is where we're headed, and this is our end result, actually here from, those are the condos, condominiums at Holmes Beach, Carol, what are they called?
Martinique.
Martinique?
Only high building on the island.
That's right, Martinique. And, you know, this is one of those, you know, poster, poster photos that we always like to share. I'll introduce Tom, we'll talk about that little schematic instruction, and here we go.
Thank you, Charlie, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you here today. I had no idea I was going to be in the presence of such a wealth of engineering support that you have here.
You're under pressure.
Makes me even more excited to be here. And, and so, as an engineer, I'm going to have to give you a section view, as you, as you see here. This is a profile of what a, what a stable beach might look like, and of course, you see the house and vegetation, a dune, a dry sandy beach, and of course, the ocean. But then, what happens after a storm is that the storm comes in and takes some of that sand off the beach and it moves it into deeper water. And if you don't have enough sand on the beach, well, what happens? The storm is still going to take the quantity of sand that it needs, so it's going to take it from the dune, or under a road, or under a house, and you can have some of these type of impacts. And so, the beach nourishment program aims, aims to restore that. Even though this is a very special type of engineering, it is still like a roadway project in some sense that it requires maintenance. And so, we bring some sand into the beach, and it primarily comes, we divide it into two pieces. One is called the design beach, which is the storm protection part, essentially the, the roadway that you never want to lose, and then there's the advanced nourishment part, which is the, the sand that erodes away during the course of the project, and of course, we have nourishment. But with that quantity of sand on the beach, when the storm comes in, the storm then has enough sand to buffer the, the houses and, and protect the, the upland infrastructure. And, and the idea is that we maintain that buffer in perpetuity, as, as you see in some of the photos that Charlie just showed. So, just to go over some of the program history and project history, you have a couple different projects in, 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 in the island, the city of Anna Maria portion, the central beach portion, which you'll hear us talk about quite a bit, and then the Bradenton Beach, Coquina Beach portion down in the south part of the island, and we'll talk about the overlap of those and the different components.
I hadn't here. Why is Anna Maria so subject to changes and dynamics against the waves? Nineteen fifty-seven was a very interesting year in Manatee County. The Anna Maria Bridge was built to the island, Palmaso La Bay was, Causeway was created. Many of the subdivisions, Coral Shore, San Remo, Mount Vernon, all were built out of nothing. And at the time, there was a new bridge being constructed to link Longbow Key to Anna Maria Island. You've often wondered why the homes in Bradenton Beach seem to stop where they are, and all of a sudden, there's a big beach that goes beyond it. Well, here's the beach. It's being constructed with a dredge from the back Sarasota Bay Area pumping on to connect what is now Lefis Key in the foreground. There is a dredge and a crane constructing the terminal groin at the end of the island to hold that piece together for the channel. And you can see to the, very far to the foreground, just where the trees start up again, a series of shore perpendicular groins that are holding that sand from washing away. As you see, that there's a lot of pressure there for Mother Nature to move that sand off where it does not, Mother Nature does not want it to be. And so, you know, groins have been a part of the holding the beach together for a long time, but one of our projects is going to be shaping and, and perhaps changing the morphology of those mini groins in the north there. They're ugly, at the moment, they're very unsafe, they're obstruction to lifeguard rescue, and it's one of our goals, and we'll talk about in a minute about moving that around. But just to give them historical perspective, nineteen fifty-seven was a wonderful time to be alive here in Bradenton. But nineteen ninety-two wasn't so great. When people say, "Well, we got plenty of beaches," I, I don't understand it. And for the newcomers from nineteen ninety-three on, they've never seen anything but this. But, you know, this is real stuff here, looking south and north, they didn't have a beach, we didn't. And we were, you know, we're probably losing about ten to twelve feet of sand on the island every year, just on average, when you look at across, some storms do a lot more, some years do, do a lot less. But that constant attack on island gives you results like this. And so, this is not what we want to produce and provide, not only for our tourism, but again, think about those natural features of shorebirds and sea turtles. I'll say that since nineteen ninety-two, our sea turtle nesting has probably quadrupled. Well, it's obvious, the sand is there now, the nestings are, are happening, and some of those turtles are probably starting to return that were first born and hatched in the nineties, and coming back to Anna Maria Island and our area. It's just a wonderful combination of, of, you know, engineering and nature. And, and so, how does this sand move? It's just a very liberal drawing of what happens, but as the waves come in, they don't hit the shore directly head-on, whether they're coming from a norther storm or coming out of the south, they hit at an angle, they bounce off and come back again, and the sand, which is part of the, the shoreline dynamic, moves with that material. And it either moves down beach or up beach, and our task with Anna Maria was trying to decide, okay, where's the pattern of movement, where's the most predominant erosion occurring, and how can we work with those forces to, to minimize our cost to maintain a healthy beach across the entire stretch? And the engineer is back to tell you about how that happened.
Thanks, Charlie. So, so Charlie showed you the kind of schematic of the conceptual way that sand moves up and down a beach, of course, we all know that nature doesn't work in conceptual ways, it works in very dynamic ways. And we've been able to identify through some of the research and studies that we've done, how sand moves onto Anna Maria Island, where it goes, and how it moves off Anna Maria Island, which is, of course, the driving force for the erosion. Primarily, there's, there's this cycle that occurs at the north end of the island, in concert with Passage Key and, and the pass there, that moves sand on a twenty to twenty-five year basis, where it comes up and cycles up onto the beach, and then takes twenty years to sort of slowly erode away, and then it comes back on again. And some of that sand circles back and moves its way in, back into the pass, and of course, sand exits the island off the south end into Longbow Pass. But sand also moves along the island, and in a net sense, as Charlie showed, it moves generally north to south. However, if waves are coming from different directions, the sand can move in two, in two ways. And so, that, that process is what's driving the erosion on the island and requires this upkeep to keep injecting sand into the island in order to maintain the, the beach in the pictures that Charlie showed. And so, just to go over some of the, the program history, sand placement has been the primary means of controlling that erosion that I just described. And there's basically two main projects that, that occur on the island in terms of beach nourishment. One is what we call the central project, and the reason we call that out separately is because it's federally authorized. You, you, you're eligible to receive money from the federal government for that portion of the island, which is the main central portion. Then there's Coquina Beach, which is, which is a non-federally authorized segment, but you do get state cost sharing for that portion, and it's managed at the south end of the island. We've constructed five projects over time since the nineties of those pictures that Charlie showed you, resulting in nearly six million cubic yards brought into the island over that time. And of course, some, the sand is then stabilized by some of the coastal structures that are along the island as well. So, the federally authorized central project, you see the general limits of it there shown on the picture, and it was, it was nourished in, originally in, in ninety-two, ninety-three with about two million cubic yards, and then each successive project after that actually had less sand. That's because the initial nourishment was in place, and then we're just coming, maintaining it. And that sand all came from dredging, most of it came from dredging the Passage Key inlet ebb shoal. There was also some mitigation reefs that were constructed as part of those projects that Lauren will, will talk about. Then we moved, moved to the non-federally authorized segments of beach that are managed locally. That's the city of Anna Maria at the north end, a small segment, which is actually doing very well these days, and Coquina Beach at the south end of the island. The twenty thirteen, fourteen Coquina Beach project was actually joined with the federally authorized project and resulted in approximately four million dollars of cost savings, because the dredge was already mobilized to the site. If you remember what Charlie said in the beginning, bringing the dredge in costs a lot of money before sand's even pumped. So, we were able to take advantage of the fact that the dredge was there, pumping sand for the federally authorized project, and tagged on the Coquina project after that.
I kind of want to brag on that. Your purchasing department worked with us, I think this is the first project in the state of Florida where a federal contractor was enticed to stay and just continue working from one day on the federal contract and continue to work in the local contract, a substantial savings. This is often not done, because the federal contractors often have other places to go and demobilize and leave. We were fortunate at that time to have timing that that dredge contractor had just finished its, a job at Marco Island and consented, in effect, to stay on, and we were able to negotiate with special exceptions to our purchasing policy to go directly to that contractor and negotiate the best price possible. And we hope to do that again.
Thank you, Charlie. If I'm not mistaken, thanks to you all for that, because I believe there was an ordinance that was passed that allowed the purchasing department to make those, make those negotiations. And, and beyond the cost savings, there was an engineering performance improvement for this in building the projects together. Beach projects perform a lot better the longer that they are, so if we can keep, keep them together, do island-wide, they, they perform a lot better. It seems to be stuck, here we go. One of the ways that we help hold sand on the island in, in particular erosional hotspots is with coastal structures. In this case, these are photos of the Cortez Groins, originally built in the late fifties, early sixties. They sustained, you know, deterioration over, over fifty years of their life, and they were restored recently and replaced with newer versions of permeable adjustable groins, which means that we have the ability to actually adjust them. This is something that the state regulators were, were very interested in, allows us to control the sand placement, and so those have been completed and are performing very well.
Again, I might add, a feature that was developed by Aptim engineers and first deployed at Longbow Key around the colony and, and north, Islander, yeah? And for a time, the state's, I, concept of structures like this were, well, you remove them. But with the adjustable engineering done by the company, we were the first to benefit from the change in, the sea change in the state's attitude towards groin construction and support.
So, now, the engineer will take a break, and we'll have Lauren Floyd, who's our senior marine biologist, has been working on your program for about thirteen years. She's just going to reiterate some of the environmental aspects of the program. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for having me this morning, it's a pleasure to be here, and to take a quick break from the engineering stream we're on. I just want to represent the environmental side of these projects, and as Charlie touched upon, these projects aren't just for the benefit of the people who use the beaches. Of course, Manatee County is, is fortunate to have wildlife habitat both on the beaches and in the nearshore waters, and so, they are a consideration from the design, the conception, the permitting, the implementation and construction, and throughout monitoring after each of the projects. So, as Charlie mentioned, you're very fortunate to have the services of Susie Fox and her team of staff and volunteers who run the Anna Maria Island Turtle Watch and Shorebird Monitoring. They diligently monitor the beaches for sea turtle nesting and hatchlings, and as Charlie mentioned also, record year of nesting last year, and Susie is a huge asset to the county, and for us, when we're working on these projects, she's a wealth of knowledge. So, helps us just design the best projects to make sure that habitat is protected. She also conducts the shorebird monitoring, so in addition to federally listed species, there's also state protections for nesting birds, migratory birds who stop here on their, their way to other places, or maybe this is their winter destination, but they all have protections in place. And so, throughout the projects, we have permit requirements for monitoring and buffering around nests, and so she helps greatly with that. What some people aren't as aware of as the sea turtles and the birds is what's underwater offshore, and I'm talking like a thousand feet offshore, depths ten to fifteen feet. This photo is actually the southern end of the island, in the area of Coquina Beach. I've had the pleasure of diving on your nearshore hard bottoms since two thousand and six. Well, it doesn't exactly resemble a reef in the purest sense, like a Great Barrier Reef, it is no less valuable. It, this is exposed rocky habitat, you have it to the north in Pinellas County, and you have it to the south in Sarasota County, and it provides habitat for diversity of organisms. And so, when there is a potential for impacting the, these hard bottom resources, all permities, including Manatee County, construct artificial reefs to offset the loss of that habitat and the loss of that function. So, what you see here is a photo, are three photographs of construction of the two thousand and eleven artificial reef, so it's actually constructed from a barge of quarried limestone boulders, and they are deployed in a formation close enough to the hard bottom that they're going to receive some of the wildlife from those areas. And so, the beauty of this, this type of mitigation is within a year to three years, it, it's virtually indistinguishable from the natural hard bottom. And so, it actually, it works so well at providing additional habitat, offsetting temporary loss to the natural habitat. And so, again, that's something we monitor post-projects as well. So, thank you for the environmental timeout. Here we are at the south end of the island, so I'm going to pass it to Charlie to take us a little step farther south. Thank you.
Longbow Pass, a complicated and energetic pass that, that changes actually every year. It erodes, it gains, adds, and, and the reason for that is that, like most passes, there's their currents in that, that, that erode and brings sand to the, to what called the flood shoal, the flood tide flooding into the land. And also, the tidal flow comes to the ebb side, to the, to the Gulf side, and when it hits the, the Gulf of Mexico, the energy drops out and sand falls to, to form ebb shoals. So, in this circumstance, sand is moving from Anna Maria, generally from the north to south. Longbow Key is generally, you see it's moving generally from north to south as well. However, there is a, a circular feedback loop that happens right along the shoreline of Longbow Key, moving about where the development occurs and, and moving to the north. And this pattern of northern movement has created an aggressive stance on erosion of the north end of the island. And the town is quite concerned about this, because as this erosion continues with this pattern, there's going to be continued retreat of beach and possible impact on the, on the dwellings and homes within the town's jurisdiction. So, they've undertaken a study with the state of Florida to evaluate what structures, like our own Coquina Beach structures, could be added to protect their property. And on November thirteenth, twenty seventeen, three years ago now, almost, two years ago, this slide was presented to the town as options to indeed protect and forestall the northern movement of sand, capturing it and blocking it around the groins, and protecting the integrity of that island. By doing so also, you're building a beach that is then both resilient to protect the structures behind it. The question at the time was, should they build the southern two, or should they build all three? And we were approached from time to time, does Manatee County want the third northernmost groin to be added to the mix? Because the principal function of that third northernmost groin is to protect the sandy beach of Greer Island, but not necessarily have any effect on the protections provided of the southern two groins. And at the time, we said, well, you know, because we consider Greer Island, even though it's county-owned, it doesn't contribute to our beach program at all. It is not credited for parking, it is not credited for, for property acquisition. It, it does provide habitat, along with the rest of the front end of the island and down beach, but we, our, we, our stance at the time was, and, and still continues to be, our professional recommendation, that the northern groin is not a county interest construction. Now, the town may wish to proceed and construct that groin, and, and we said, well, it's fine, go ahead and do that. Now, the town also asked, it's not just the groins that work, it's a combination of that, that rock fill and then a packing in of sand around each groin that has to go with the construction initially. Can't just put the groin out there and wait for the sand to come back. You've got to give it a head start. And the value of that sand is, is, is driven by how, where you can get it from. If you have to truck it in from quarries in central Florida, they've estimated a, a cost of around seven million dollars. If you have to pull it from offshore, well, the mobilization for the equipment is almost six million dollars, so it's about the same price. However, if you can pull it from the pass, literally right next to the, to the area, in conjunction with a maintenance dredging of the pass, or just finding that it's the right time to kind of enter, to get on a half-cycle and maintain the pass, even though it doesn't really need it, but to jump in there and do it, because the sand, at about, you know, ten dollars a yard, can be dropped on the beach as opposed to twenty or thirty or fifty dollars a yard. So, sand in the pass is valuable. It's valuable to the town to be able to use, and it's also valuable to Manatee County, because as Coquina Beach erodes, this is the cheapest sand available for us also. So, over time, there's been an agreements with the town that says, whenever we do a maintenance dredge of the pass, this valuable sand will be shared between the town and the county. And now, in, in reality, I have to say this, it, it is a state resource. The sand is not ours to share or give away, or if or give away, or for that matter, to trade in a way. It's a state decision to do so. But the town and the county have been working for 30 years on these questions. When the pass was first maintained back in 1979, I remember that, when that happened. And we shared sand then, and ever since have been trading off. So the town put together a request recently and said, well, next time this pass is dredged, what can we do to share? And we said, well, now, we need some sand too. We have to have about 80 units, 80,000 cubic yards to be placed at Coquina Beach to replace sand that we lost during the two passages of hurricanes. If there's any sand left over, after our needs are satisfied, have that at town. You can get a separate contract with that same contractor and work your deal and bring the sand over to you as substantial savings. Maybe, you know, $3 to $4 million as opposed to having them say, well, no, we need all the sand. And you'll just have to find your sand from some of the source. And so this has been our olive branch up to this point and continues to be so. In fact, the town, and not wishing to stop there, working with the state of Florida, has looked at, and this next slide is going to be the slide that you're going to see at the joint presentation. We see this package from the town manager just last weekend up there at our beach conference. They are working on five structures. The southernmost, S1 and S2 are there, obviously, to protect the retreating shoreline at those condominium locations. Still proceeding with N1, 2, and 3, Northerns 1, 2, and 3. I believe they're prepared and ready to put all five in place. And not just kind of, at one point, they're going to say, well, let's put, you know, both Ss down, N1, N2, and see how things work. I think the state said, here's how it's going to work. You're going to build five groins, if you're going to get them permitted. So they're on their way. And they'll be needing sand. Now, they may not get all the sand they need after we, our sand needs are met, but they may. The last time we made a survey of the pass, it was about 170,000, about 170,000 yards there. That was a year, almost two years ago. We've had several storms pass since then. A lot of deposition from the Ebb shoal back into the pass. So when we survey it, we'll know. But the concept is, sharing sand at this point in time, instead of just saying, well, we're going to take it all, even though we don't need all of it, we're going to take it all. Because, and the reason is, we can say, is that the last time the pass was dredged, all the sand went to Longbow Key. They needed it. We didn't. Now, this year, we need some of it, but not all of it. And there's the trade. And there's the thing. So we're there. And it comes to this. So with each successive pass dredging, we're going to go through these exercises again and again. And I want to say again that the state has the final say. If we were to debate and say, you know, we need it all this year, and town says, but we need it. I believe the state would ultimately intervene and say, like Solomon, we're going to do it this way. And we all would have to adhere to that. But I think the sense of negotiation and cooperation that we have now, the goodwill that we've had, has returned benefits both in terms of our trust of each other. And it's not very often that a town and a county work together like this when they're both looking at a very high valuable resource, who's going to get it. So we've done the right thing. Here, one more. Is that not going? There we go. So.
Thank you, Charlie. And we'll be wrapping up here with just a couple of slides looking into the future to let you know what things are coming down the pike in the next few years. The graphic I have there is a map from one of our monitoring reports. And the only reason I brought it up is to show you how complicated and complex your overall program is. Of course, we're talking about individual projects, but all these individual projects build up to one big, highly successful program. And they all overlap and do their part. But it is a program. In the near term, the next two years, we'll be looking at basically three nourishment projects that we just went through. The Central Beach project, we'll be trying to tag on the Coquina Beach project as a betterment to that federal project. And then separately, the Coquina Beach FEMA storm damage repair from Longbow Pass that Charlie just described. There's also some additional mitigation reef installations that we'll be looking at. And then further down the road, we'll be, we're in the process right now of doing a feasibility study to look at the refurbishing, the jetty at Longbow Pass, and removing and/or replacing the structures at Coquina Beach, as Charlie mentioned. They're in pretty bad shape right now. The good news is that there was a tremendous supplemental funding bill passed by the federal government. And this is just informational purposes, for informational purposes at this time. These are estimates. But the Army Corps was funded with $17.4 billion, and that's with a B for impacts to Hurricane Harvey, Irma, and Maria. And a little over $1 billion of that was appropriated for Florida impacts. That is an unprecedented amount of federal money coming to the state. Through some of the coordination that we did and back and forth with the Army Corps of Engineers, we were able to make the case that Manatee County was impacted by these storms, and that resulted in a $14.3 million appropriation for the county.
Again, because during that assessment, the initial assessment, during all those storms, FEMA was out there, the Corps was out there. And they took a look at the central beach and said, well, you had a little sand loss here, but it doesn't rise to the level of federal interest to repair it, based on the data we have. And we were done. And I said, we're not done. I know we've lost, not only width, but our beach deflated. It went from this thick down to this thick. And I said, there's got to be more sand here than they're not taking into account. So we requested aptum to take a second look, and look at your numbers, and what happened.
Yep. So we did our own separate calculations, independent of the Army Corps, shared those results with them, and went back and forth. And of course, when you're taking surveys in the wake of a storm, there's a lot of different things that go on. And we were able to come to terms on that number and actually prove back to the Army Corps that there was a substantial loss ineligible for this funding. So it worked out really well. Of course, the caveat and all that is that the Army Corps has a very aggressive schedule to get these projects in. And every time we hear, you know, this is difficult, there's a lot of moving pieces that'll have to come into place, the answer we always hear from headquarters at the Army Corps is, well, is this an emergency or not? And we say, well, yes, it certainly is. And we're going full steam. So all of our focus is on getting, making the best use of that funding. And so we're going to try to join together the Central project and the Coquina Beach projects to make use of that federal funding that has been appropriated and is coming. We've estimated the total project cost for the central portion to be $16 million. The reason that's different from the 14 that you just saw is that that also includes some monitoring and the other things that go along with construction, not just construction. The federal cost share on that, once you divvy up the percentages of what's eligible, we're estimating $8 million from the federal government. Of course, because you do so well with public access and the openness of the beach to the public, you're eligible for 50/50 cost share with the state as well. And so of that $16 million, the local cost share chips all the way down to $4 million. Likewise, Coquina Beach will be constructed right after that project, same equipment, same contract, and an estimated cost of $6.5 million. Now, Coquina does not have the federal component like the Central Beach does, but you still get the 50/50 cost share because it's 100% accessible to the public. And so the local share there is estimated at $3.25 million. There are some additional mitigation requirements that are going to come down. We've met with the DEP on that. We've organized the plan. And we're proposing to construct a 2 million, sorry, 2-acre limestone mitigation reef. That will absolutely, once and for all, satisfy all of your mitigation requirements from now forever. And it won't have to be done ever again. And that, again, because it's not only publicly accessible, but it will be a condition of the permit, is 50/50 cost shared by the state. So all these things are 50 cents on the dollar. Now, that's, of course, I have to say, is subject to the legislature and those funds being appropriated. But you are eligible, and we are, Manatee County always ranks in the high percentages because of the public access that you have. And I think that's actually what Charlie's going to end with. Thank you.
And now to the work at hand. Obviously, there are programs all around this coast of Florida, from Pensacola to Jacksonville. Each one of them, some of them receiving federal funding on the same emergency basis, some long waiting for their projects to come forward. So there's a shifting and prioritization that always occurs. Now, the Department of Environmental Protection and all of us applicants have long since agreed to a process, a process of prioritization and ranking that we like to agree that says, all for one, one for all here, trying to avoid the legacies of the past where Miami Beach took all the money because they had all the legislative authority and power in the legislature, and then followed by Jacksonville and other places. Well, that's, those are times of the past. However, you know, some of the political, some of the political will is still creeping in to take the lists that are forwarded each year to the legislature and say, well, you know, this is a democracy. We may want to take our list and kind of rearrange the priority of, you know, number nine to number six, and number five goes down to number 10. Those things sometimes happen. But at the moment, I want to say that the list that was submitted by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for legislative consideration, literally last week, around Wednesday, holds Manatee County on a priority list of number six out of 28 projects for the federal share, and number nine out of 28 projects for the Coquina Beach share, again, based on the strength of our public access and the severity of erosion. And I might add, a nod to the good engineering that we have and the reporting that we make to stay completely woven into the state priority process. So when we make our request of the legislature for the annual renourishment budget, which right now is hovering around a recommendation for $50 million, we need to just simply say, target $42 million. If money must be taken from the program, please don't take it below $42 million, for our project will fall off the funding list. We hold it at $42 million or above, our projects are funded with its state share that we've mentioned. But legislature always has the opportunity and the right to reprioritize the list. We've never been surprised before in the past. We've been able to hold our position because we're good projects. But, you know, you can't promise until signee die of the legislature. Our matching funds, of course, have always been the tourist development council, one penny of five collected. It's a very strong fund. The numbers we presented here have been reviewed by our financial management department. Our funding is strong. We don't believe we'll need to borrow, but we may need to borrow some over the short term to meet our local responsibilities. But the, we're quite well off relative to having a solid and stable local match available to us. And without that match, we would be at the whim of the legislature who would say, well, if we give you the money, you're going to be able to build it. And we say, well, we're not sure. You can tell. We'd end up probably on number 27 on the priority list with that kind of reply. So it's been grateful that we had to look those funds, but they've been supportive. Now, you know, each of these projects, as you see the last three times, have come forward under storm damage protection, substantial off-budget increases to the Army Corps. There may be years in the future where we'll need renourishment that has not supported such bonus federal funding. So we always need to be alert to continue to emphasize the value of beaches at the federal level. When we go to Washington, DC, and we speak to some of our local delegation, they understand it. But someone from Missouri, maybe not so much. So we need to keep those matches going. And we do that through our Florida Shore and Beach Preservation Association and our American Shore and Beach Preservation Association, two associations that work in our behalf to keep the legislatures tuned to this economic engine, which is our beaches. Sun sets. Are there questions?
Yes. Commissioner Whitmore.
Thank you. And, you know, this year, it's my 50th year living out there. I'm fortunate. But that's actually the place where the low-income housing was when I first moved there. We paid $50 a month when we rented. So it's changed a lot. My first six months as a city commissioner was the first project, the first beach renourishment. I remember all the elected officials going out and watching the sunbeam pat. Thanks to previous, like Ms. Duffy and Katie Perola, who actually went to Tallahassee and had to go before Governor Childs to get this started for the first time. And what I read in the paper and was told was, Governor Childs said, well, I guess if I don't approve this, I won't get a Duffy's burger. So that's how it all started. And I thank them, the previous people, for doing that. A little history of Anna Maria, and I just want to make sure. The reason why they're not on a federal project is because their residents that lived along the beach refused to sign an easement. Is that what it was, an easement?
Yes, for the northern end, that's true.
Right, for the northern end. So for years, and then after they saw what a great job that would happen on the rest of the island, then, of course, they want to be included, but it was too late. And then there was a way that we could get some. Longbow Key, for the new commissioners, they pay for all their own beach renourishment. They assess their property owners because they chose not to do what Charlie just said. They did not want to allow the public parking. And it's all on a formula, how much the state pays, and maybe the feds too, on how much parking. And that's why we always talk to the cities about when they start limiting their parking, because that will limit the reimbursement we get from the state.
Yes.
Yes. And that's very important. And I've heard Longbow Key's kind of starting to reconsider that because of the cost of beach renourishment. But that's their issue. You didn't mention Brayton Beach on this, like a touch-up from the hurricane. I saw you said Coquina Beach and the central, which is Holmes Beach, more or less, to a certain part in Brayton Beach. I was at the beach house Saturday, and I, for the first time in years, the water was awful darn close. And I got up to see, and it looks like a lot was eroded. Is that included in the touch-up?
Yes, it is. It's included in the federal portion.
And if we, let's say the state doesn't give us funding, the people way before us determined that a penny of that would go to beach renourishment from the tourist tax. Is that something in the future, if all the monies went away, that that's an option per state law?
It is. And I might also emphasize, you're given, knowing the vagaries of the legislative process, applicants are given three years to recover their funding. If not this year, get a second try. You get given a third try to get your project reimbursed for the effort that you have to spend to get it done.
And then the engineer, I wanted to, and you may know, Charlie, because you weren't in charge with the beach renourishment at that time when it first started.
It's Jack Orsman.
Yes, yes, that was him. But they have engineers on the beaches that actually measure the vibrations. And that's one of the big parts of beach renourishment that you wouldn't think because of the structures and also the habitat and everything like that. And they have to make sure there's a certain guideline, right?
Right. Well, you have heavy equipment. I mean, you know, D9s, D8s running up and down, and that kind of, goes all the way back up to the wet sand into the buildings. A lot of people say, you know, after you passed, I got these cracks right here, and now I've got damage. And we say, well, let's sit down and review the video. And then they quiet down.
And the only last comment I wanted to make is, years ago when I was mayor, there was an earthquake in the Gulf, which I was at Home Depot in town. And I could start getting all these calls from the citizens. And I didn't know what to do. Karen Wyndham was the head of VOC then. So I called her because it was right after the big tsunami that we all heard about on the news. So I said, well, what do I do? And so we had to call someplace in the middle of the country. And by that time, they told us, due to the geographics of the Gulf and the plate, that we probably would have never had one. Scientifically, I would like to, you know, somehow know, you know. But we had an earthquake in the Gulf, and everybody on the island felt it. So.
Well, we're pushing into oceanography and geomorphology, and we can bring that answer back for you.
Yeah. I mean, that would be interesting because Karen had to actually call to find out. But, yes, thank you. Because you guys worked very hard on this. This is not an easy project, and it's very complicated. And thanks for hanging in there for all these years, Charlie, because you're a wealth of information.
If you, pardon me, to add one more story to this, because Katie Perola did play a significant role as a woman, as a mayor, and as someone who never gave up. Because the federal share and the federal authorization was very important, but not an easy task because there were so many others wanting the same deal up and down the coast. She had the Anna Maria Island Elementary School all write letters to President George Bush, and they sent them as a package. And this is no fib, or no urban legend, that there was a little note from the president that said, let's see if we can help Katie's kids.
Uh-huh.
And that's all it took to the Secretary of the Army, and our project was funded.
Really?
Yes.
Never heard that.
Yeah. That happened.
Aww.
Okay, Commissioner Benak.
As your at-large county commissioner that doesn't live on the island.
But you're there a lot.
I will tell you, I take my responsibility to evaluate the beaches very seriously.
I know you do. I see your face.
Even working hard on weekends, holidays, Friday nights, you can find me there, evaluating the conditions of our beautiful beaches. So I just wanted to assure you all of that. I do have a question. Why does Coquina Beach not receive federal funding? Carol mentioned Anna Maria, but I don't know why Coquina would not be eligible for federal funding.
I was actually hoping you'd ask that.
It was the beach. They won't do the.
Federal criteria looks to the value of the beachfront property, not only for their investment, but for investment, but for the magnitude of beach they put in front of it. Miami Beach, for instance, deserves and obtains 100-year storm protection, a very, very wide beach, because of the billions of dollars of values behind it. Anna Maria has value also for structures and residences, but as you recall from the picture, the residents end at the, at the end of Brayton Beach limits there. And so for recreational purposes, the state of Florida recognizes the values in terms of tourism dollars and, and, and funding. But the federal government draws a line that says if there are no substantial values to protect behind the effort, the federal interest simply isn't justified. So you won't find federal assistance on state parks, places that, like Kokina Beach, that just don't have the value, high-value infrastructure behind it to do the, you know, benefits and costs analysis that is done with each and every project. And so that's why the federal government finds that there's not enough benefit for the cost of participation through that stretch.
Because, of course, Kokina Beach, with the incredible parking and biking facility, I mean, it's just, it's really a fabulous place. It can accommodate so, so many people, more than Manatee Beach, of course, more than Anna Maria, because of the, of the parking availability there. It's just.
Which is, which is why we get the state support we get.
Yeah. Also, so on the Longboat Key side, so are they looking to permit these at this time? Is that what they're working on, those five groins? All five permitting, and then they have funding to build all five?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And our, our cost share, if you will, is sand, not anything else? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they may continue to request, don't you want to share the cost share that they're nor the most going, because it's going to be protecting your, your property. And we've always been able to say politely, well, no, that's okay, because we consider that very, very variable shoreline to change with Mother Nature. There's no structures to be protected, and it comes and goes. Now, the, the drawback is, of course, with those groins, they're interrupting the refreshment of sand from the south to the north. All the models predict, and we will observe, once those groins come in, the northern part of the island washing back into the eb, into the flood shoal, probably wrapping around and connecting to the island and landlocking the condominiums to the back. Some of it dropped off to the offshore again to be picked up next time we do navigation. But without replenishment from the south that the groins will block, the island will rapidly begin to erode at that point.
I had the opportunity to see Dave Bullock do his presentation at Longboat Key, and it was an incredible presentation where he presented the history and pictures of Greer Island, what it's been, what it hasn't been, you know? It has changed so much. It's just a naturally changing bunch of sand.
Yeah.
And that's just the reality of it. So I, I, I understand the purpose of, of this, and, and especially I understand the importance to the residents on Longboat Key, but it's, it's really kind of a tough, tough thing to know exactly what you're going to get when you build these. So, thank you.
Commissioner Serbia.
Oh, thank you. Excellent presentation. I really enjoyed everything that you taught us today. And I have a question for the ecologist, please. I, I've read recently where the city of Key West has banned the use of sunscreens that contain certain chemicals because of the reef health. And so I just wondered if this mitigated reef was under that same challenge.
Good question.
Um, I don't know of any specific research here, but I would assume that what the studies are showing in other places would be true, anywhere you find corals. So we don't have the same amount of corals that they do down in the Keys. You, you do have corals on your hard bottom and on your artificial reefs, but it's not a coral-based reef like they have in the Keys. But I was encouraged to see that news this week, that they actually passed that. I see it as a step in the right direction. I know it's gained momentum, at least through public channels, and people are being informed, but I don't see why, at least, people couldn't just change what they're buying, whether it goes to ordinances elsewhere. I don't, I have no idea if it's having effects on your corals. I think those are probably minimal compared to what they've got there, if that answers your question.
I was actually at the beach yesterday, and I just, you know, was reminded of what an economic engine it is. There were hundreds of, if not thousands.
Traffic.
Thousands of people walking everywhere and enjoying the beach, and it's really nice to see, so.
It's been nice, the times I've been out doing dives or snorkels for work, and people come out off the beach on their inner tubes and just ask, you know, what are you looking at down there? And we tell them, and they'll get back to the beach, grab their mask and snorkel. So I'm excited for any opportunity to, to remind people what, what's under the water, and it's, it's just wild, and it's right there.
And lowering your family and your friends, become tourist.
Right. Well, I started, this was the first project I worked on in 2006, and I, I had kids in 2009, 2011, and they have grown up, come to the beaches a few times a year. They do the beach tours with Susie Fox. They get to, they've been educated on sea turtles. I mean, this is like a second home. So apart from my work interest, I mean, it's, it's like my home away from home, so I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys and support your program.
Thank you.
Okay, just a couple comments, not to be Mr. Doom and Loom, but we know that, you know, this is all never going to work in the long run, you know, with the sea rise coming along, global warming, storms getting worse and worse, you know? Hopefully, you know, as long as the federal government and the state government doesn't pull the plug on, on it, you know, it's, you know, it's a great asset to us, but in the long run, you know, I, you know, I don't think you can fight with Mother Nature and win that battle more often than not type of thing, so it's.
You got to check with Amsterdam. Actually, the renourishment of sand, we, we did it, asked that very question, we didn't want to put it in the presentation, but give me a second. They said, what happens with sea level rise? How long can we last with the traditional sand replenishment? And it really is a question of how high is the island? The, the maximum elevation of Holmes Beach is about six and a half, nine, nine at some points is, but behind the, the homes along the back beach are about four feet above sea level. And so by re-nourishing aggressively, we can resist up to four feet of sea level rise against the beach. However, we'll end up with a strip of sand, as viewed from an airplane, because we, we will be flanked around through Sarasota Bay, and the, the island from the, from the eastern shore will flood and come back up to the sand. So, you know, beach sand is not the only solution, but it would be part of something if they would want to get serious about tidal gates and pumping other things. But it, it is a very costly alternative to flood-proof an island like that. But you'd be surprised that beaches can play a role in providing you some resiliency for three or four feet of sea level rise, but it works best when you have a bluff behind you, and we don't have that.
I just know, you know, again, from hearing from some of my constituents, always go, why do we, why does the county keep, you know, blowing all this money on beach renourishment? You know? We do it, and within one storm later, it's been wiped away. And I say, well, you know, we get federal funding, state funding, doesn't really cost our taxpayers that much in the overall scheme of things. But, you know, it is a, you know, people do think, wow, you know, because it's not, everybody goes to the beach as much as we all would like to at times, and having seen, you know, the beach house when the water was up to about halfway through the dining room before we came along and, and did the renourishment, same thing with the sand bar. When I was first here, that was probably, what, Carol, a 400-yard stretch of sand out there on the north end?
Right to the walls where you are.
And it came all the way in, so it moves a lot type of thing. And like I say, I'm not trying to be doom and gloom, but I just take all this kind of with a grain of sand, if you will.
Instead of salt.
Mr. Hunsinger.
Commissioner, just to remind you, you have a joint meeting coming with the town of Longboat Key the end of this month, and the subject of these groins at the north end are on that agenda.
That's what I wanted to ask before that.
Thank you. Commissioner Whitmore.
Just real quick, Elliot wanted me to let everybody know that, that we raised it about three, three years ago. So we, tourist tax pays one and a quarter for beach renourishment. And also, Steve's comments, I understand that, our number one industry in Manatee County is tourism, and then the second is ag. So is it, does it behoove us, I mean, after we just went through this terrible red tide event, to not promote our, you know, our number one asset? And, you know, that's up to everybody, but while we're getting the money, Steve, I agree that we should do that. And then for business purposes, we, a lot of people got jobs because of this tourism industry, so. But, but he's right, we have, in the long run, who knows?
Commissioner Benak.
Yeah, and the only, the only guarantee is none of us are getting out of this alive. I mean, we all know that. So it's the only guarantee we have in life. But I, the, the taxpayer dollars are solely tourist development taxes. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that we're correct in.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And, yeah, I agree. I mean, it's, if you go to Manatee Beach, which by the way, I just want to say, they do an incredible job at that concession with music and folks enjoying the beach, and it's just such a unique environment, because it's, it's very different than what you see in Sarasota with their, you know, giant parking lot, which I admit, they use every bit of that space down at Siesta Key. But it, it's just so different to have your toes in the sand, to listen to music, you know, to stand in a relatively short line, to get food and drink, and people love it. And they're doing a great job on Friday nights, the music, and they're from all over. You talk to the people when you're down there, people are here from all over, and they love coming here and supporting our beaches with their tourist development taxes. So that's why I think it's important that we track that and get as much of that tax dollar as we can, talked about that before, and make sure that we continue to use that in partnership with the feds and the states. So I think you're doing a great job. And thank you for training us, because we will take this message forward. And of course, the environment is beautiful when we're out there, too, and, and just to be able to see the water clear, it's amazing. I actually saw snook in the bay, saw it, could see it, looking down, see snook. So that was really exciting to know that our water quality is improving, and we know that's not something we can count on forever, but, you know, we just have to stay vigilant on top of it. So, thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody else, thank you. Charlie in group.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Great presentation. Moving along, next item is moving to the consent agenda, citizens' comments. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the board on consent items only? Seeing nobody will close public comment. Commissioner Trace.
I move we approve the consent agenda minus, is it 21?
It's deferred, right.
It's deferred, minus 21.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda minus item 21. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Next thing up is the, item number 38.
Charlie.
I know who gets to speak.
Commissioners, Teresa Webb, your procurement official. The item before you today is requesting authorization to terminate an agreement number 18-RO68563CD with John F. Swift for design-build services for Manatee County Lincoln Park pool. We are asking termination for convenience and without cause to be effective February 15th. On July 24th, the board awarded an agreement with John F. Swift for the design-build services for Lincoln Park Pool. The county has determined it to be in its best interest to terminate this agreement for convenience and without cause, based on the provisions of the contract. If approved, this termination would be effective at 12:01 AM on February 15th, 2019. And if you have any questions, myself and PMD are here to answer those questions.
Commissioner Bellamy.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, but I do have some comments based on us terminating. I think our next step, I want to make sure, some things are out there when we go and identify the next phases of the, of the pool. I learned yesterday that we don't have a, a master plan for the Lincoln Park altogether, and I do want to make sure we put that out there with us identifying, when we go back to design, to begin with the end in mind, identifying, you know, all the different areas that we want to make sure that we address within the Lincoln Park. I know the pool is the priority right now, but one thing that I have expressed, and one thing that I've said, is that we do not want to botch this up within the, within the Lincoln Park altogether. So identifying a master plan is going to be very, very important. The second thing, I'm sure, once we start moving forward, we're going to have a design option. But I, when I spoke the other day, I think because we, eventually the city of Palmetto's going to be involved, and obviously going to have to have some information coming from the public, I think when we go to design, we need to consider two or three options so we can have an opportunity when we do connect and come as one, we can draw a conclusion and, and vote on one, and then we can move forward. Very, very concerned as this continues to take and move for a potential stall. And I don't want, I don't think we need to stall on this. I think we need to take and be proactive in, in some of this. And if we have an opportunity when we go to design, I expect the designer to look at three options, give us two or three options so we can actually vote on one and then move forward. I think that'll put us in a more beneficial situation, as well as a timeline, Mr. Chair, as well as a timeline from the beginning to end. We just complimented our engineers on how a great job.
Yeah, get to work.
With the great job with all the things that they do, but I, I think some of this needs to be put out there in front of us so we can make sure we, we, we move forward with it.
I would agree, and, and I think there is a timeline coming forward shortly on approving that Mark Parks master plan, as well as the timeline for the implementation of that plan, the master plan. Is that correct? Mr. Administrator.
I think we're going to have a discussion of that under Commissioner Comments. This is related to the specific canceling of the contract, and I don't want to confuse the two issues.
Okay.
I'd be prepared to talk about that under the comments.
All righty. Any, don't see any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. So that's the last item, I think, on the agenda.
We have to vote. We got to vote, we got to open up the public.
Vote to what?
Terminate.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Let me open it up for public comment for the issue of terminating the contract with John Swift, Inc. Seeing nobody from the public will close public comment, need a motion.
Move to approve termination. Second.
A motion from Commissioner Boss, seconded by Commissioner Trace. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I think we've completed all the regular agenda items, so we will open it up for Commissioner Comments. I think where we started the last time. But anyway, let's start down with Commissioner Whitmore.
I only have one thing, and it's regarding, at the TDC meeting, I mentioned that the commission was looking at the Airbnb issue, and that we were going to proceed with, possibly proceed with trying to recoup monies that we're not receiving. We didn't have any formal action or anything, but they were interested, and they said, you know, they more or less agreed that they thought it was a good idea when they heard about what other, the other counties have done. I told them that we were looking at their, if our tax collector doesn't do it, possibly somebody up here at the Department of Revenue or something, somebody else could collect it, maybe it was Mickey. But I know our, but we're going to bring, be bringing this up at a future work session, correct? Right.
That's my understanding, yes.
All right, that's all. I just want to make sure that we're still on it.
Yeah, I have had people reach out to me. I, I don't actually know where we are on that.
Well, that's why I'm.
So the TDC is looking to do a recommendation to us to do this?
No, no, I gave the TDC an update on what the commission is doing.
Oh, okay.
That's what I said.
Okay, I was a little bit confused. So, you know, where do we stand on that? So are we going to talk with the tax collector and find out where they are? I don't, it was kind of left hanging, I think, but maybe I don't know.
I think that's correct. It was left hanging what it's, what the next step is. If you'd like to arrange a discussion with the tax collector, or if you would like some research from the county attorney's office, we are open to either one of those.
Well, if I understand correctly, Mickey said that his research, research found that we could enter into an agreement with the Department of Revenue with the Department of Revenue to collects, to collect the tourist development tax.
Yes, that's what he said at the last meeting.
We said, well, we kind of like to hear what the tax collector thinks of that, but I'm not sure, unless we do something, that he'll have any motivation to talk to us about it. Am I misconstruing this? I, I just don't know if we don't make a motion or something, then what would be his incentive to talk to us?
He is, he is under the impression that he's talking to us, only because I, you know, saw him last night, was just kind of saying something, and he goes, well, I'll be speaking with you all soon.
Yeah, why don't we?
He's under the impression he's speaking to us.
Yes, I, I was under the impression we were going to invite him to a commission meeting.
Thank you, that was my impression.
That was as well.
And so I think, I don't know if we need to do a motion, we just need to, at our next meeting, extend an invitation to him to come in and speak to us on this subject.
Regular meeting or work session, it doesn't matter, I mean.
I'd say a regular meeting at this point, and I don't, that's scheduled for the 27th of this month, I believe.
We'd like to know what he's doing, yeah, his thoughts.
Commissioner Benak.
Okay, so, we will extend an invitation to him to come and speak at a regular meeting. Is that, if somebody would like to make that motion, otherwise I'm going to make a motion.
Well, make a motion, if you want to make one.
Well, I, I would make a motion that we ask our county attorney to look into entering into agreement with the Department of Revenue.
Does anybody look back at the minutes from the last meeting to see what exactly was said?
I remember what, actually, what she said is correct.
What was said is that we were going to wait to hear from the tax collector.
Yeah, she did.
But I, I just made a motion, so if it dies for like a second, then we'll see.
It's going to die. I'd like to make a motion that we.
Second?
Nobody's seconded. I'd like to make a motion that we invite the tax collector to come to our, one of the next meetings that's convenient with his schedule, to give us an update on what he's planning, and to convey our thoughts that we want to proceed, one way or the other.
That was a motion?
Yeah, I just said I'd make a motion.
Second that, I think we need to talk with him, so.
As a courtesy.
I don't know whether a meeting or a work session.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where I'm going, for sure. I, I'm thinking, because of the, the amount of questions and the amount of discussion, maybe we need a, a work session instead of inviting him to the meeting, because I'm thinking this is going to be something that we really need to go and dive into, and obviously, we're going to have to get some legal assistance and things like that, so maybe a work session.
I'll amend my motion to change it to a work session.
I'll amend my second.
All right, let's rock and roll, then. Ready to go.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, any public comment at this point? Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, work session with the tax collector.
Mr. Chair, just so I'm clear in terms of my office's assignments, there, there are no assignments as of this moment, correct?
Right now.
Thank you.
Probably will be.
Just to do your diligent job, as always.
If I, if I could clarify that, I, I do think it's important that the county attorney be able to explain the option of entering into agreement with the Department of Revenue, since that is a relatively new option, if I understand this correctly. So when, while we're discussing that, that option has to be on the table, so that's, I would like you to be prepared to discuss that in the work session.
Certainly, and recall, commissioners, my, my office has written an opinion memo on the subject already that I, that I distributed the last time you discussed this, this item. And my memory is that we even distributed a draft ordinance.
Correct.
That would accomplish that, so, so yeah, that memo dates back to May of last year, as I recall.
It does.
So, so certainly, we'll be, we'll be prepared to trot out that memo and the draft ordinance at the work session and discuss it with you.
And, and if I might also, because this is a legal issue.
Right.
It has been presented as a legal issue by the tax collector, they've sued. I would like to know more about where those lawsuits stand statewide. You had said nothing was happening with this one, but I know we're, that we're not the only county that has sued, so I'd like to make sure that when we do talk about it, you do have information regarding, you know, what, what that's about and where that's going.
We can, at the work session, my office will be prepared to deliver an update on what's going on statewide in terms of litigation.
Thank you.
And if I, if I may interject to that conversation, I'm sure that that is, or would be, the tax collector's main item to discuss with us, since he's the one that filed the lawsuit.
Well, I, I can't direct his attorney to do anything, but I can direct our attorney to do something.
He would probably have more information.
Well, he may or may not.
I tell you, Commissioner Bellamy, you have.
Yes, I think it's, it's two things here. Yesterday, at the TDC meeting, the young, the individual that was representing Anna Maria Island identified that they've, he didn't want to disclose how they were doing it, they was, found a way to actually receive some of this tax, this tax money, if I understood it the right way, so.
Yeah, you're right.
Right, but I, I didn't, I can't remember his name, I'll probably have to go back and look at the meeting, but he, he actually stated, say that they, they found a way, but they did not want to disclose it, so I think.
Probably the Department of Revenue.
It's the city of Anna Maria. The city commissioner of Anna Maria, they found a way to find these Airbnbs and do something and collect.
Right, and to collect, so I think we may need to try to, try to reach out to the city of Anna Maria and maybe get some type of information on that, as, as well as getting information from the lawsuits. So I think we have two ways to kind of investigate and, and lead the charge on what we're going to do.
Commissioner Benak.
It was code enforcement.
So, so when the tax is due, a room tax, where does it go? The tax collector picks it up and goes to the state, right? So what you're saying makes me even a little bit more nervous, that you've got a city now doing it uniquely on their own?
No, it's all code enforcement, I think, that, you know, they bust them and turn them into the tax collector.
Probably the Department of Revenue.
Well, see, I don't think, we're all saying different things, so I think this needs to be clarified.
We don't know.
Correct?
That's why we're going to have the workshop.
I'm going to ask the mayor.
Well, again, this is something that needs to be.
Yeah, I'll ask the mayor.
Addressed by staff or our county attorney, because we don't know.
Correct.
Mr. Attorney, are you comfortable with the direction, kind of, that we've led you to? Yes.
You better talk to the tax collector.
Okay, let's see, I'm telling you, who, who brought that up? Was that you?
Yeah, I don't.
No.
Do you have any comments, or any, yeah, comments, Reggie?
Well, I, it's, it's one more thing concerning, in, in my briefing, I received a layout as far as the scope of work with the Lincoln Park pool, and one, one thing that I did not see in that I requested be put on there is, is a slide for the youth, and it's not, it's not in here, so I request for that. But I guess now, Mr. Administrator, is the time for us to hold that little brief discussion about the master plan and, and the specs of it, as far as what's going on at Lincoln Park.
Do you like me to do it now?
Yeah, why don't you, yeah, let's just get that out.
Now that we have canceled the contract, now the next step is to design a pool in Palmetto. I provided each commissioner yesterday with the, with the scope of services for the design of the pool, but before we move forward, I wanted to make sure that what we design is what people want. So I, my intent is for you to take that document, study the document. Since it's not on the agenda today, I will agenda it for your next board meeting, for you to discuss and vote on the design of what you want in that pool, if there's anything other than what we provided to you. And I talked to Commissioner Bellamy, he has some thoughts, but I think as an agenda item, it would be better for the public and anybody who has interest in this pool to see it on an agenda and be able to come forward, perhaps talk about the item. And thus, I would propose that you don't discuss it today, take it, understand it, talk to your constituents, and we will agenda it for the next meeting, for you to go through what it is that you want in the design of a Palmetto pool.
Commissioner Benak.
Yeah, and Reggie mentioned the master plan for the park, and I know when I was looking at it, and we said, you know, what about parking? We said, well, nothing's really going to change there in the current thing, but is there any kind of master plan being done for the park?
Let me explain, at this point in time, you have a parks master plan that you will have on your agenda, but it's a master plan for the entire county's park system. We do not currently have a master plan for each of the individual parks, to talk about the specifics of what's going to go into any particular part. But the, what we have scheduled for Palmetto over time is the pool, the replacement of the basketball court, and some enhancements to the football soccer field with the AstroTurf. Those are all individual projects scheduled for Lincoln, Lincoln Park. The question is, we, if we have a master plan for the rest of the park, no, we don't have one today.
Well, and I know that there's plans for the tunnel, I don't know when that happens, and who's doing what, and how that might help, but it, it sounds to me like when we're getting ready to discuss this, we probably should have all of those factors part of the presentation and the timeline. I, I think we're going to be in trouble if we just focus on the pool. So I, I think that, I don't, you know, I don't want to add to anybody's workload, but we know that we have to relocate the basketball court. So what's the timeline for that? I think that would be important for people to, I mean, just for everybody to have an understanding what, what and when.
Commissioner Bellamy.
Yes, and, and again, this is why I'm, I'm hoping we don't botch this up. And, and I think, and I think the design, going to design is very important. We are at a significant phase here with the Lincoln Park and the way we can impact that community. And I think the design is very, very important, so looking at the scope of work and putting it on the agenda item, I think all of those steps are very, very significant. However, I am aware, once we go to design, the timelines and things like that, on how significant that is, I just, I just want to make sure that, okay, we designed a pool, and then we don't address certain other things that take place along with the pool, you know, like the bathing, the parking, and those issues right there, I think is very, very significant. So we just, again, want to begin with the end in mind and be proactive instead of reactive, and that's just my concern. More disappointingly, that we don't have a, a, a vision of a master plan. And I, and I think we should do that, and when that comes to play, I want to be involved with that as, as the commissioner of District Two.
Commissioner Baugh.
You know, I think now's a good opportunity to make sure that this board has some say about, I'm concerned now about the RFP going out to get quotes, because this board really hasn't talked about what we want to see at that pool. So, and I understand Commissioner Bellamy's, Bellamy's concern, I, if it were my district, I'd feel the same way. And I don't know that master plan is the right term.
Right.
For this, maybe just plan, in that, you know, what is, you know, Charlie and, and others looking for, hoping to have here in Lincoln Park to go at the pool? I mean, obviously, parking and shaded areas and tables and all that, we're going to, we're going to have to have. I mean, it just wouldn't be right not to have that. And the other thing is, and I talked to Ed about this yesterday, and Sherry in my briefing, you know, the, the first question for me was, how many kids are going to be able to get in this pool that you're talking about building? So, you know, I don't know what the answer is, either Charlie, or Sherry, or Ed, perhaps, could fill us in a little bit, because I would suspect it's going to be going out to RFP pretty soon, since we just canceled the contract that we had. So, you know, you guys need to let us know when we are going to talk about what we would like to see at this pool, and keeping it knowing that, you know, we don't have millions of dollars here, you know, we, we still need to come up with a plan from Palmetto. So, but we need to make sure that the pool right now is the main concern, and making sure that we have everything there that the pool needs to be able to handle the kids, because I think that's, for most of us, that's probably our biggest concern, is making sure that the kids have a pool to enjoy and learn how to swim in, so, you know, that would be my concern. I don't see anybody getting up, imagine, Sherry, Ed, somebody.
We have, what I provided yesterday was the potential scope of work for a Lincoln Park pool. It consists of a competition, combination learn to swim pool, a 25-yard high school college competition pool, USA Swimming certified, minimum 130 individuals in the pool, bathing load is the term, zero entry in learn to swim area with four to seven feet deep minimum competition area. The pool's to be operated year-round, heated and cooled, a pool deck shade structures, concrete room finish pool deck, ADA compliant pool, lighting to be LED, deck underwater in night use, bonding, grounding, and lighting protection for pool, perimeter fencing and signage. That's what we propose to design, and the question to the board, when you have this on your agenda, is to discuss these items and any additional items or deletions you'd like to put forward, so that when we hire the firm, they design what it is that you want. And we would propose that discussion be at your next board meeting.
Thanks.
Commissioner Benak.
Yeah, that's what, that's what you just had said, that, so before we go out for an RFP for a pool, we're going to design the pool, we're going to do it in a public meeting, it's going to be on the next agenda, we've all got an outline of what it is today. And then we're, we can talk about if somebody wants to add things, delete things, what the cost will be, what the implications were, and we're going to hear from the public, right? That's where we are?
That's what it's all about.
And since you have a partner in the city of Palmetto, I have talked to the mayor about this proposal. She's comfortable with the proposal, but she has a city council, so I would imagine there's more than the seven of you that are interested in what's to be designed.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, is the district commissioner happy with that?
I'm, I'm happy with the direction, and I'll wait until it's agenda time to make sure the things of concern. I will let you all know, I am going to invite individuals from the, from the community to come out and have, and have a voice to, to assure that this is, you know, what the community wants also. That's, that's very, very important, so, thank you.
Agreed.
Commissioner Trace?
So we're on Commissioner comments? No, I mean.
Yes, new, new comments.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to ask Mickey, are we on for the voting of the acting superintendent? Or do you need a motion, or do you need, not superintendent, administrator, excuse me? Or do you need any mo, do you need any direction?
Stop watching school board meetings.
I, I was, I was, I'm sorry.
That's tonight at the school board, the superintendent. It's in the newspaper.
Well, I was at one last night, sort of, kind of. Do you need any direction, are we ready for that at the next meeting?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Trace, thank you for bringing that up. As my office has previously suggested, now that you have adopted the ordinance changes, we have suggested that you would now adopt a separate resolution specifically appointing Sherry Corrie as the acting administrator, the assumption based.
And that will.
My assumption is based on, my assumption is that Ms. Corrie is, is the individual of choice. And so, yes, we continue to recommend that you adopt a separate resolution, making that appointment, and specifically calling for a contract to be negotiated, and so it would be nice if the board were to give my office instruction to craft that resolution and to come back at your next regular meeting with that resolution.
I would like to make a motion for the next meeting that we have that resolution on the agenda.
Second.
Thought it was.
Well, no, it's, I had this discussion in my briefing, too.
My office has never actually been instructed to craft the resolution that we've been recommending.
So we have a motion in a second, open it for public comment, any from the, buddy from the public wish to discuss? Not, don't see anybody? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All those opposed? Seven zero, okay? Draft her up.
Wrap her up, get her, oh, that's Cortez, get her done.
It's our next meeting.
Twenty-sixth, I believe, twenty-sixth, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
I was going to say, I would like you all to come to the school board meeting on the 26th, but if we're meeting that morning, I will remind you all then.
I wouldn't go to that meeting for no, but I will watch it on TV.
I thought it's tonight.
No, 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 not, not that one, I'm talking about the renaming.
Oh, the superintendent, oh, okay, oh, that one.
There will be food.
Okay, I guess.
It's a public safety issue.
I just have, have one item, and that's, again, a request for a work session to give Rodney some direction on finding the process that we would go through to find a permanent administrator somewhere down the road, so that he knows, you know, are we going to go for a national search, local search, blah, blah, blah? But I think we, you know, would like to have a work session scheduled as soon as possible to go through the process, if you will, as we go forward down the road.
Mr. Chair, have we identified, I know it's a year away, but have we identified a timeline for this process?
That would be part of the work session.
And that's part of the, that's what we're doing in the workshop.
Correct.
You need a motion, Mr. Chair?
The lights are, wait, I, the lights are on?
Nope, Whitmore, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. So, when Rodney was up here, we gave him direction, or he gave, asked us to put something in writing of what we wanted to see in administrator so that he could have something to present to us when we do come to a work session. So we're all supposed to be doing that too, and I was going to actually give it to, yeah, he.
Well, I met with him yesterday, and he's a little confused. So he would like some, some direction.
Yeah, but we, he did ask us to, so, well, he did ask us to do that, to put something in writing what we were looking for so that when he comes to us, he'd have something. Did anybody else not hear that?
No. I did not.
I did not.
All right, well, I did.
You sleeping again?
No, I was actually listening.
Okay, so what, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for a workshop to discuss how to move forward for a county administrator.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We will open it up for public comment. Seeing nobody from the public come down. Commissioner Ball, you just, I haven't taken you off the board, maybe?
And I'm, just real quick, we went through the painful, except for two of you, we went through the painful process last time, so let's hopefully we can get it right and get a good company because I was not happy at all. And I, it would, I think it would have failed anyway. I mean, because, I mean, so hopefully, we've got to give better guidelines. And just this commissioner and talking to people around, I do support somebody in, from Florida, because Florida's a whole nother bird than Minnesota or Detroit or some other place, California. So I'm going to support somebody, at least I'm going to strongly encourage that we look strongly for somebody in Florida. Because some mentioned at another meeting that they were looking to look outside, and I don't support that, not the way Florida is.
Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, I would just like to add, I'm glad to hear Commissioner Whitmore saying what she is because, you know, the last time it was such a, I'm going to go ahead and say it, it was a zoo. It was ridiculous. It was unprofessional. So hopefully this time, we can move forward in a professional manner and do a much better job than what we did before. Because obviously, we need the strongest, strongest administrator that we can find for Manatee County to take us to the next level. And we're going to have to make sure that whomever that is would want to be a part of this county. So I think it's going to be real important on how we handle ourselves in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Benak?
And this is a, an issue that many, many people in the community are weighing in already about what they want to see, who they want to see. We have to have plenty of time in advance. And I don't want us to rule anything out because I saw kind of what the school board went through, and I thought that was a mistake, what they did with Ms. Saunders, I mean, you know, saying she couldn't be, they, she couldn't even apply for the job, and then they wanted to change the rules to make her the superintendent. I don't want to go down that road.
A lot of that goes on, it seems, changing the rules.
Need to learn from their situation and make sure that we're clear on who can apply for this job and not rule anyone out. That's my position.
Commissioner Servia?
I just wanted to say thank you, Betsy, for saying that because we do need to enter this with an open mind. And while I can sit here today and say that it sure does sound like limiting it to Florida applicants, there might be some benefits to that, I just don't know enough to say that. So I, I think it's a time of learning and listening and making sure that we select the best person for this job for our taxpayers. So I'll be looking for new information as much as we can get.
Will said.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven to zero for a work session on the administrative replacement or naming of a new administrator process. How's that? Betsy, you have anything?
Nope, just want to make sure we give people lots of notice of when that workshop is. I know sometimes workshops show up pretty quick, and I know, I was looking for workshops, and I know it's tough to accommodate all of them, but we probably do need to see a schedule of when those, that workshop will be because I know a lot of people are interested in it. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Ball?
On what Commissioner Benak was just saying, you know, it might even be that we'd need, perhaps the chairman might consider scheduling another special meeting. Because I think you will have a lot of public come in.
Special work session, you mean?
Well, I don't, whatever you want to call it, but, you know.
Pre-tuned.
Yeah, okay.
It's the two days, yeah.
Thank you.
And just, I'm sorry, just so I understand, and what is the difference between a special me, is it the location?
We can't make a decision at a workshop.
Workshop, right.
And just talk.
Oh, that's what you're talking about?
Actual meeting, you can make decisions.
Okay, and I do understand that.
I don't understand.
But I said a special meeting.
I, I would like to add that our workshops currently aren't televised, mostly. Maybe that's not always true, I don't know. But I think it's important to have the workshop here and have it televised because, you know, we just want to have as much public participation and understanding of this issue as possible. So I don't know where we're planning to have the workshop, but if we could have it televised so that people who can't make it physically here can see what's happening. Please.
Not sure how to address that. I think it's a good point.
You're the chair, you can do whatever, but, yeah.
Again, you know, I don't, if the room's available, I don't see why that would be a problem. But Commissioner Ball?
Just to add to what Commissioner Servia just said, in the six years that we've, that I've, and Commissioner Benak have been on this board, we've had that discussion several times about how our workshops should be televised. Because the public, you know, has a right to know what's being said and done in these workshops, and they don't. So perhaps, you know, sometimes in the next year or something, perhaps we could have that conversation again.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Whitmore?
Well, the purpose of the workshop is to sit around a room and less formal, not have somebody have to come before the dais. I would, I would support it if the, if our dais could be down there and we could sit with them, kind of like they do where it's somebody that speaks sits across from us like they do on the fourth floor. You have more citizen input if you're not intimidated by this dais. As far as METV being able to televise it, maybe we could ask them if they could televise it up there. But it's a less informal gathering, and, and you're not going to get citizen engagement because they are not going to come up here, except for the few that do, because they aren't intimidated. If it would work and we sat down there and we had a table across, I've seen on TV like Sarasota, the city of Sarasota, or the county in Sarasota, where you're actually one-on-one and you're less intimidated, I think you get more valuable input if the, if the citizens are less intimidated, and they are. They're very intimidated when they come here. I hear it all the time. I'm nervous, rack, I can't, you know. And so this is a way to get what they feel.
Yeah, I, I look forward to a debate on this issue. I don't totally agree with what Commissioner Whitmore just said. And I might also add that there are other counties that do meet and have workshops in their chambers, but they're down in a, you know, like in front, not necessarily up here on the dais. But I do believe, from all the public comment, the people that have talked to me about this, and it's been a lot over the six years, and people want to hear what this board is discussing in workshops. They feel like it would give them the opportunity to kind of know where we're going, what we're thinking. Because you don't always get that opportunity when we're up in a commission meeting on this dais. So ultimately, the most important thing this board should, should think about is making sure that our public is totally informed as much as possible. It's kind of going back to what Commissioner Bellamy said about the pool. You know, he wants to make sure that the public has an opportunity to come forth and speak, you know, and I think we've missed the boat on that in years past. So I would look forward, if, if anybody wants to have a debate on that topic, let's have it, because I think it's extremely important.
Okay.
I'm sorry, a debate on the topic of having work sessions?
Televised.
Televised. I, I don't know if I can debate it without enough information. I mean, I.
Well, I don't think now is the time that I was referring to.
She's not talking about now.
In the future.
Maybe we'll have a work session on work sessions.
Work session on work sessions.
We actually, we actually have. Steve, sorry, we actually have.
Sure we have.
They always ended up on the fourth floor.
Yes, that is correct.
Commissioner Servia, do you have any commissioner comments you'd like to add?
I do just have a few things, and I'll be very quick. I just wanted to share with the board that I went to the Legal Women Voters presentation yesterday on phosphate, and it was a, it was a great meeting because you had so many different opinions there on a very emotional topic. And I think that anytime you get everyone together and you start talking about things, it's a good thing, right? So it was, it was good. I hope that we'll have the opportunity for more of those discussions. And one of the slides on the, one of the PowerPoints that I remember and I wanted to share with you was a quote that said something like, "For every complex issue, there is a simple and neat and easy solution that is wrong." And I, I just loved that because, yeah, because nothing is simple. It is very complicated. But it was a great, great meeting, and I think everyone walked away from there learning something that they didn't know. The second item I want to talk about is Canaan Park. I have had a couple of emails asking about the status of going forward with making it a park, where, where the tower is, the public safety tower. And the residents are asking for an update, so please, if I could ask the administration team to get back to us on any timeline on that topic.
Motion to make it a park?
Oh, do you need a, do we need a motion?
I would have.
Mr. Chair, did we ever actually take a formal action to, from all the meetings with the tower, it was like a pass at park. It was, but did we ever make a motion to include that into our, our system? I don't like, think we ever did. No, Betsy, Shay, I don't think we ever have. So that would be a work session. That's a big decision. I think that needs to be a work session because it's money. It's going to be Monday, what, there you can do impact fees with it to make it or whatever.
Right.
You know what I mean? It's a bit, it, we've talked about it, it's a pass if people go in there, but I don't think it's on our formal plans.
Commissioner Benak?
Yeah, I know, I've talked to staff and being Charlie and Ed about things that could be done.
So nothing yet, okay.
Especially in terms of, we've talked about living walls around the.
That's a great idea.
The, the tower, when we're, public safety tower, and talked about screening and stuff, but, yeah.
Bunches.
I think staff might even have had, I'm looking at Charlie, staff might even have had some discussions. I can't remember where we left off, but you're right, I, I did bring it up and have some discussions, but nothing has happened to my knowledge. But that's to my knowledge, maybe I'm unaware, think good things happening.
Why don't we prepare a report on what it is that we're doing out there, and then after you get the report, you could have a workshop discussion on it.
Okay, thank you.
Can we make a motion with a timeline for that report to come in?
Oh, Charlie's here. He's not going to not do it.
Well, I know you.
Well, and I'll just add that there may be some opportunities, and Charlie may know about this, as we approach Arbor Day, there are many, several organizations that are giving away or selling trees at a very reduced price, and if we need landscaping for this park, there, there may, there may be some opportunities. So I'd like to talk about it. Item number three, the upcoming law seminar that we all look forward to, that the county attorney does on May 23rd, I've asked if they will please pursue AICP credits. For those of us continuing education, right now, there are continuing education credits for lawyers.
Oh.
But planners also need law credits.
Oh, they do?
And so, and the county attorney's office is looking into that. So for all of our planners out there, stay tuned because you might actually earn some credits.
I think I self-certified it once.
Oh, yeah, yep, I did too. Yep, I've done that too. And then.
Could I jump in on that for just a moment? I'm intrigued by the self-certification, Commissioner Benak. So, so you actually turned in to the governing organization, the fact that you had attended this particular seminar, and you got credit?
Yes, it was, it was probably the first year you did it. Because I haven't pursued AICP continuing services credits in the last couple of years, kind of let that one go. But I can understand why Ms. Servia would not want to let it go. It's a very, 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 very tough thing, test to pass and maintain your credits, it's very important. And people like John Osborne shaking his head. So, yeah, I, but to the extent that we can get it certified, I'm sure folks like John could probably even tell you how to do that.
It's not very difficult. I'll be glad to help if you would like, but we can, well, we can self-certify up to eight hours. It's, it's better if we could get the law credits for it.
Okay. I, my assistant has already looked into this, at least preliminarily. Let me read to your, to you her email from yesterday. "Mickey, fees are not waived for government agencies like what the Florida Bar offers. We would have to become a member of the AICP, which is $224 a year, and provides us with one free credit. Once our seminar is reviewed and awarded credits, there is an additional charge of $115 per credit awarded. Please advise if you want me to proceed with the application." So I, I need to talk with Patty a little bit further about this. I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit confused by her commentary, but apparently there is a cost involved in order for us to secure certification from the AICP.
Just charge the planners.
And, so, so that's why I was immediately intrigued by Commissioner Benak's suggestion that she self-certif, or that she, she self, you know, she simply self-reported and got the credits.
Because of the eight hours.
So.
There's a limit.
Yeah, there's a limit of eight hours.
You have to have law credit hours, and you have a limit, like Misty said, and so.
But apparently, they are wanting to charge my office some kind of a fee in order to pursue this certification. Unlike the Florida Bar.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Osborne has some information.
Charge 50 bucks to attend it, get your credits.
Commissioner John Osborne, I'm the interim deputy county administrator. I'm also an AICP planner through another organization, Florida Planning and Zoning Association. We may be able to skin that cap for you for the fees and have no fees, but let me check into that, and I'll follow up with you, sir.
Okay, thank you, John. Thank you, John.
Wonderful.
How's everything?
And then my last item is, I'm going to say it until we get to the date, March 20th, District Four Town Hall. I want everyone who can attend, who would like to attend, to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa, any comments?
Just a couple of things. Going back on the workshops being televised, you know, right now, we're having a lot of discussion on stormwater fees and the need, what we need to do for the stormwater situation in Manatee County. Those need to be televised. The public needs to hear what we're doing, particularly if the end result is to come back and ask for a stormwater fee. The public needs to know what we're doing and why, and, and hear all the details on that, just to add to that. But getting back to Canaan Park, I don't feel like we really finished that the way maybe we should have. I'm going to make a motion for a report to come back to this board within 45 days regarding the park, and I would like for, also in the motion for it to be put on the agenda for a commission meeting so that the public can be here to hear the report.
Second.
And then I do have one more thing, sir, after that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second regarding Canaan Park. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Seeing nobody, all those in closed public comment? Oh.
I'm sorry. Is that doable, Mr. Administrator?
For him it is. For him it is.
Well, he's the only, he is the only one I can ask right now.
I'll have to check my calendar, but.
And he'll be charging a professional fee to deliver a report in 45 days.
I'm sure we can get that done.
Thank you. Okay.
The other comments from anybody? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, zero.
I think Ed and his wife, and my husband and I are going to get in the RV and travel across the country when he retires.
Well, then you won't be at the meeting.
Hey, I didn't say I was gonna be there, I just made the motion.
Wide statement.
No. We did talk about that yesterday, though. My last thing is that I just wanted to bring up, you all received the memo, the memorandum from Senate President Bill Galvano on transportation, and what he was trying to accomplish for the state, because according to him, it was in his memorandum, that the population is growing every year about the size of Orlando. So our roads are extremely important, we are behind the, we're way behind on what we're doing, so it is very important to him to try and move this forward. I think I mentioned to you in the last meeting that the MPOAC had done a letter of support that was gonna be sent to him. Yesterday, I was in the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council meeting, and a couple of the other counties in there brought it up, I didn't, they brought it up, to let us know that their boards would be voting on doing a letter of support in their next commission meeting. So I thought I should bring it up to this board, I'm not gonna make the motion, I think someone else should, but it is something that, since, you know, the Senate President is from this county, we need to support our Senate President, and he supports us, and, you know, I really feel like that this is something we need to look into doing as well, because I think it would be embarrassing for this board for other counties to be supporting it and his own hometown not to. So I just wanted to bring that up and see if there's any thought regarding that from this board. I think it's something maybe that there should be a discussion about. But perhaps if someone else brings it up and does the motion, maybe it would pass, and so.
Commissioner Urbanak.
I just wanna make sure, specifically, Vanessa, I'm trying to find what you're referencing.
Didn't you get the memorandum?
I don't think so.
No.
Did y'all get it?
Are you kidding me?
It was on social media, it was in a paper, that's where I read it.
Yeah, that's where I read it.
I, I read, I read it on, I read it in one of those print things that come out
Back things?
That says what, where the news is coming from, that's where I read it, but I've not seen anything specifically.
Commissioners, I am so sorry, I did receive it, I apologize, I thought we all did. It never occurred to me that you didn't, I will make sure you get it this afternoon.
I was looking for it real quick, because I get a lot of emails, and I thought maybe I missed it, but I do.
I apologize, I really did, I thought we all received it.
I don't mean problem.
I will get it to you this afternoon, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it.
Commissioner Bellamy, I think you, did you ever?
I just, I must learn something, but I do wanna make sure I bring up the Somerset Lighting Project again, because I have heard absolutely nothing about it, and due to the fact that you just gave us a way to get a 45-day report, I'm not asking for that, but I am asking for some information. I am asking for some information.
We sent out a notice, a schedule of events, but I'll resend that notice about Okay. The process is and what the timeframe is for the various steps that we need to go through.
I remember seeing that, yeah.
We'll get that out to you.
Anything else, Commissioner Ball?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Nothing.
Mr. Hunsater?
Nothing, sir.
You're having way too much fun.
Yes.
I don't know, Nick, do you wanna address us for a minute, or?
Oh, okay.
Just he wants to update the
On the trip?
Upcoming trip to Tallahassee, I believe, in 30 seconds or less.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, Nick Azariah, information outreach, next Tuesday morning, I guess we'll all be departing for Tallahassee. I think everybody's arrangements are taken care of in terms of who's riding with whom, and arrival dates and times. The committee meetings for legislators will come out, they're not out yet, so, again, that's making things difficult to schedule, but that's not unusual, you know, so, once the committee weeks are confirmed, or, excuse me, committee meetings are confirmed, then Carrie can go about solidifying our meetings with delegation members. One thing I mentioned to Commissioner Johnson was just the difficulty of having seven commissioners, two staff, and Carrie Roth, 10 of us all, try to cram into some of those smaller house meetings, so we may have to split up occasionally, and I know our local delegation members will do our best to get everybody in the room, if that's your preference, and then beyond our delegation members and the familiar senators and house members that we're accustomed to meeting with, we also are gonna try to meet with FDOT and DEP staff to talk about our local road, our project on the priority list, and then with DEP about the Piney Point project and any concerns you have there. Because the Piney Point issue is unresolved, you know, it would probably be the attorney's office that one of you attend that meeting, and we can report back in a public forum afterward, and if you wanna select who that might be, whether it's the port chair, Ba, county commission chair, district representative, but that's up to you, probably if we're able to get a meeting with DEP to discuss the Piney Point project.
Oh, I will definitely be in that meeting.
Well, it has, what about the district commissioner? She just mentioned the district commissioner.
I know quite a bit about it myself, yeah.
Well, it can only be one, that's what he just said.
Why can it only be one?
Because it's a law.
Well, our board, so your position on the platform, correct, is to dispose of the water and a
At the state.
Ecological, you know, I think we're in the room to, you know, I guess, again, express your appreciation for having the local workshop, but then the gentleman who presented to you at the port a few weeks ago had committed to keeping our board apprised with any significant developments along the way, and I think it's probably good to remind them of that, and I
Mr. Chairman, I can add to a little bit of what Nick is saying here, I actually have a telephone call scheduled with John Coats this afternoon at 4:00. There will also, probably in the March meeting of the port, that's what we're looking at right now, there is a procedure that DEP is familiar with, they actually sent them out to Piney Point to try and come up with a solution, and unfortunately, because of sunshine, I can't say much about it unless we're in this meeting, and it's not totally confirmed yet, and that's why I haven't brought it up, but it's possible that there will be a presentation in the, in the March or April meeting of the port of this new procedure, because some of our legislators are interested in this procedure. I can tell you that I've spoken to a lot of the landowners out that way who are interested, you know, so that is something that might be taking place, that's why I was asking you, Nick, about why only one person, because this is a huge, number one, or not, I shouldn't say number one, but one of our top three.
Yes. And Commissioner Ba, my thought there was if DEP and/or HRK are far enough along to be discussing specifics, you know, we wouldn't wanna worry about any sunshine rules with more than one of you being in the room. You have taken a position on having the materials disposed of expeditiously and environmentally sensitively, I believe, but regarding specifics, you have not, if I'm not mistaken, correct? So my only concern is that if there were specifics brought up, you would not be able to speak to each other in that room.
Well, I think in that case, then you would be, I think we should all be allowed to be in the room, is that what you're saying, but just have one person speak?
He said one person.
Look, it's really been consistent, consistent advice.
All the time.
Right, so consistent advice from the attorney's office. More than one of you attends the meetings and with our delegation members, and we're, you're all at liberty to speak about those items that you have approved on your platform, here's one where if it gets into the weeds and specifics, I just wouldn't, not that, so, more than one of you are welcome to attend, I just, if specifics come up, then
I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna get in trouble.
Obviously, you're advised not to speak about it in that, in that forum.
Correct.
Our attorney, can I hear?
I will echo Nick's commentary, the preference is only one commissioner in the room on that subject.
Not going.
What about the district? What about the district?
And I have thus dispensed my advice.
It's, who's the district, are you or Reggie?
I'm the district, I'm the district, and to be honest with you, I've spoke for months on this, and I know quite a bit about what you're talking about also, so, you know, Vanessa and I, we can duke it out.
I will not say a word.
At the chair, I mean, at the, at the car.
And actually, it's up to the chairman.
The fastest one to the Uber will get to go.
Commissioner Urbanak?
Yeah, there is so much still to be discussed on how
Yeah.
This is gonna happen, what the implications are, yeah, I would not feel comfortable in trying to be in a discussion with DEP about this. I look forward to a meeting and hearing about it and having that public discussion when we come, but I can't go advocate to DEP for anything without that. To my knowledge, the only thing we put on our legislative agenda is that we want the state to take this up and deal with it. I don't think we've even gotten any further down in the weeds than that, so, that we all, that that was, that's why I said, hey, the board already took action, we know we want something done, but.
Careful what you wish for.
Right, and I know there's gonna be ideas, we heard some of them, and I'm hoping that they'll be good ideas, but there's probably gonna still be a lot of discussion about that, so you guys know more about it, way more about it than I do, but I would not feel comfortable being in a meeting with the EP and having this discussion, because new information's bound to come up.
Guaranteed.
So, that's where I'm at.
We might have that problem in other meetings, too, because we haven't been
We voted, but Vanessa agreed not to talk. Vanessa said she would not, she would just, so as long as only one person's talking, and if they still wanna take the risk, but I'm not.
I mean, that's what we're told all the time, right?
Well, not, this is different.
Why is it?
Because we didn't, we're not voting on what they're gonna talk about, we, and so, we're, when we go up there, we vote, our legislative platform.
Commissioners, as important as this item is to the county.
Right, then we can't, but then we need to have it at a public meeting, only one commissioner, and if you go, just don't talk. Hey, I brought this up in September, I mean, you know, I know this is important, we all do, but we gotta do it right, unless we don't wanna get anybody in trouble, so, and I don't, don't wanna get in trouble, so.
If I may, you know, commit, I would imagine that Charlie, being your natural resources director, and I, I'm willing to attend as well, and I'd be happy to provide a recap of whatever comes out of that meeting, and don my former reporter hat, and let everybody know, very shortly after that meeting, in writing, what took place, and then you could be prepared to talk about it in the next board or port meeting. Would that work?
Up for me.
I'm sorry, with, with a commissioner in attendance, whoever that may be.
Priscilla, I don't, I don't have, I won't say a word, but I wanna hear what is said.
Yeah, she said she won't say a word, so as long as she agrees and wants to take the risk, I'm not.
I'll take the risk for this county any day.
So the plan is then two of you will attend, and then Charlie and myself will attend. Correct.
Still gonna talk.
The other, the other stuff, I think, is pretty clear, where your position is on our platform, and we'll, we're gonna, there shouldn't, there are no issues, there never have been in years past, we go into the room, we talk about what the board's priorities are, and we come out. So, thank you.
The chairman normally handles that, isn't that correct?
Yes.
We talked about that yesterday, too, and it's, you know, how these things go, they're conversational, and it tends to be whoever speaks up first, but of course, it's the chair's prerogative.
Well, normally, the chairman brings up the conversation first, and then others can chime in after that, but
Yeah, the chairman.
Our chairman normally leads the meeting, or at least that's the way it's supposed to be.
Starts. The way it's been.
Correct, starts it, tees it up, and somebody else hits the ball.
Pressure.
I'm the chair.
Oh, Commissioner Urbanak?
Yeah, and this is a good conversation, so will we be meeting with Carrie to maybe talk about this, so that we can maybe divvy up responsibilities, I mean, it would be nice to have kind of an idea who's going where, when, will we have that coordination meeting with Carrie?
Yeah, so I expect by the time we leave, all of our appointments will be pretty well-firmed up, and we'll try to have, you know, an afternoon meeting or dinner with Carrie the night before our major day of appointments being Wednesday, so we would meet with her Tuesday to strategize.
I think, I think that's a good idea, that. Other thing, do we have an opportunity to meet with anyone from the governor's office, only because it's, and maybe y'all have looked at the schedule, and this is already on there, and I haven't looked, but, you know, new governor, it'd be nice to know what some of the major priorities, other than what I'm reading in the news.
Yes, Commissioner, we have made that request, and at the time we made the request, the governor's office was still getting their, their staff positions firmed up, and I'll check again with Carrie today to see whether she's made any headway there, and I believe the chamber had attempted last week, but was not able to firm up any time. We will keep trying to get meet with the new governor.
Yeah, and maybe you should touch base with Michael Gallon, just to find out, because they're, they're back, I know they were up
Right, we're actually speaking later today.
Okay, good, thank you.
One other, because I've seen some, but not all of you, probably since the last time we talked, and that, that is an issue related to the Green Fishing Pier, Charlie, do you wanna?
BP Oil Fund, BP?
Yes, your platform asked for appropriations of approximately $1 million to start the planning process leading to demolition and reconstruction of the Green Bridge Fishing Pier to a fishing pier, and when we moved our state expenditure plan funding priority to Kingfish Boat Ramp, which, by the way, was recently approved by that same body, that consumed the first four-year increment of funding being measured out to Manatee County on that 15-year payout plan by BP. So we won't be able to begin actual work on Green Bridge for at least four and a half to five years, if we intend to use state expenditure plan funding from the Restore Act. So because of that, it would not be, it would not be appropriate to ask for construction funding this year from the state of Florida, when we won't be able to actually spend it for another three, four more or more years. And so we were going to socialize the issue with our members this year, providing a fact sheet, and that will be bringing back a Green Bridge project in the years to come for our members and other members who have tenure in the legislature, to try to emphasize, this is still very important to us, but we can't honestly use the funding that we would be asking for this year, so we're going to tone it down a little bit for that request. The last time the bridge was inspected was 2015, and at that time, it said that there's a useful life remaining where it can be safely used eight years in that range, very difficult for engineers to forecast that, but this year, we're going to commission yet another inspection of the bridge appropriately, and if the word comes back, well, no, we gotta take action more, more quickly, we'll be prepared next year to, you know, go in with both feet and ask for possibly full funding, so we can get it done without closing it to the public in the interim. So, that's it on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on these, on these meetings that we go to in Tallahassee and DC, for the new commissioners, it's very important that you go to these meetings, because if not, you know, something might come up later on that you're not gonna have a clue as to where it came from, you know, because maybe not because anyone purposely doesn't tell you, it's just, it's a lot going on at the time, so it's really best to try and make sure that you, you do go to all the meetings, you hear everything that's said, so that you're on top of these major issues that we've made our priorities. And the last thing I would say, as far as Piney Point, I just wanted to add this, you know, the bottom line is, we all know that what HRK would love to do is to have a deep water injection well. That could possibly, you never know, go down and be part of our Aquifer. If y'all don't go to the meeting, and y'all don't hear that, and know that, and know everything that's said, you know, you're gonna have a lot of public people coming at you, a lot of our citizens wanting to know about all this, and you're not gonna be prepared for that. So, trust me, been there, done that, I've heard it all before, I've, I've been involved, so you better take heed, just saying.
Commissioner Whitmore?
I know, I think Priscilla pushed her button, she, I know she didn't wanna talk about that, but Charlie, you know, the money for the Green Bridge, you know, the city of Anna Maria got $750,000 from the state for historical significance for the pier, why can't we try to go for those funds without a matching? And our matching could be the BP funds, we could take
Absolutely, we intend to do that, but I just wanna be sincere in being able to inform the legislatures when you need the money.
But we need to talk about that up here, because if we do talk about it up there, have you thought about asking for their monies out of the historical, because Galvano's lived here forever and ever, and everybody up there, Robinson was born here, he knows that bridge has been here for 50, 60 years.
Well, in fact
Maybe longer.
But we're calling for its demolition and removals, and replacement with a new structure.
That's what the city here did, they demolished their
In trying to follow a historic theme, I think, in their reconstruction, but, no, I'm not saying that any funding source is precluded from the table, we'll go after everything we can, from any direction, but people always ask, you know, we got a lot of priorities, you gonna spend the money this year? And the answer would be, well, it'll be a couple more years before we actually get started, and they'll say, well, then, when you're ready to build, you know, understand what you need, we'll be prepared to support you then, and it's much, it's an honest exchange.
All right, that's fine, I got it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Commissioner Trace?
The plan with the Piney Point, and I'm not saying they've never had it as an option, and I'm not saying we shouldn't be villaging about it, but what they're working on now has nothing to do with a deep injection well. And so, you made it sound like they were trying to go around us to get that, that would probably be the cheapest option for them, but I think they have understood that, that the will of this county is not to have that option.
Exactly.
And that is not the option that they're working on.
May I interject?
Commissioner Urbanak?
I was just gonna say, on the Green Bridge, I did happen to look at it when I was riding my bike over the bridge on Saturday, there are issues. You can see rusted-out rebar, and the concrete's falling off, so I'm glad to hear we're doing an inspection.
That's for it, to Manatee.
Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, just real quick, I do understand, Priscilla, what you're saying, I know it is true, but I've also seen enough to know you gotta stay on top of it.
Did not say not to be diligent.
And that's my point.
I agree with the diligence.
Okay, seeing nobody else, I, I just got a text, just, I'll leave on a bright note, that on March 27th, President Galvano will be hosting Nick Bolatieri and giving him an award, and for all that he's done for the state of Florida, so, you know, pretty good chance I'll probably go up for that presentation, so I think that would be a real feather in the cap for Manatee County.
Is it in Tallahassee? Yeah.
What day?
27.
March 27th.
I'll be there, yay!
Okay.
Awesome.
And with that said, we're adjourned.